So noting that the time is 4:05 on this, the 85th anniversary of Jesse Owens winning his fourth gold medal at the 1936 Berlin Olympics and the almost 24 hour anniversary of the US Men's National Soccer Team defeating Honduras 4 to 1. Soccer comes first, thank you very much. I will call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us for the regular meeting of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. Today, in addition to our regular meeting, we'll be conducting at 5:30 PM sharp the IRC's third pre-mapping public hearing to gather public input on communities of interest and other important factors to consider in how county supervisory district lines should be drawn. Before we get started, I want to thank our staff, our contractors, and our hosts today here at the Valencia Park Malcolm X Library for providing us with such a great setup. I also want to thank members of the public for their patience in waiting for us to get started and for joining us today virtually at the moment, but I'm sure we'll have some people in person. Again, knowing that COVID-19 questions remain in the front of everyone's mind, if anyone has any questions now or as they arrive, I'll ask our staff to keep abreast with them and answer any questions, but please feel free to consult IRC staff. My intention again when we have such meetings is to stop around 5:15 or 5:20 to allow for some technical transition and then again, start our pre-mapping public hearing promptly at 5:30 PM. Once that public hearing is finished, we'll return to the IRC's regular business. I'll now ask the IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting.
Thank you Chair Bame. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak to the commission during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at san diego county.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to speak to the commission complete a form in advance for planning purposes. Individuals participating virtually or by phone are asked to submit an online request and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff has speaker slips available. All timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting either in person, by phone, or virtually will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. Chair Bame?
Thank you very much, David. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. David, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I would like to note for the record that commissioners are participating both in person and via teleconference and as such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to say present or here when called upon. Chair Bame?
Here.
Sorry, technical difficulty. Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Garcia is here. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Chen is present. Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ?
Here.
Commissioner Serbin?
Present.
Thank you Chair Bame. We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, David. The next item on the agenda is non-agenda public communication speakers. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on subject matters within the commission's jurisdiction, but not on item on today's agenda. The only action the commission may take is referral to staff. As a reminder for commissioners, this means the IRC cannot vote to approve any items that are raised by the public under this portion of the meeting today because it's not on our agenda. However, commissioners can ask staff to follow up on any questions and of course can request to add items for consideration on an agenda for a future meeting. With that, David, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda matters?
Thank you Chair Bame. We do have one member of the public who has requested to address the commission virtually. Mayor Rebecca Jones, you have two minutes to address the commission. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
Thank you so much. This is Rebecca Jones and again, I am the mayor of San Marcos, but I'm speaking for myself today. So I just wanted to bring up the information that maybe you don't know if you don't know North County and that is that we have the 78 corridor that essentially runs through most of our cities here in North County. So that would be the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and at the very end is Escondido. I think it's very important to note that in North County, we have a very distinct identity with very different from downtown San Diego, South Bay, East County, all of that. So I just wanted to mention this because I am hoping that looking at the supervisory districts, that the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and then also the unincorporated parts of North County would be kept together in one district. We've worked very well together. I don't know if you're also familiar with Innovate 78, but it's a collaborative effort. We've been able to attract businesses and we work together and so it's been a great effort with our 78 cities. Unfortunately, I know because of population, Escondido cannot be included in our district. However, keeping the rest of the 78 corridors together, the corridor cities would be very, very important. We have a lot of, like I said, different needs from the rest of the county and so I'm hoping that moving forward, you would keep this all in consideration and I really appreciate your time and for your stepping up and serving the community and the public. I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes those who have requested to address the commission in advance. However, if any other member of the public would like to address the commission under non-agenda public communication, you're welcome to do so. If you're participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or press star nine if you're dialing in by phone. We do have a second request. Mike I. You'll hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You may need to unmute yourself and again, under non-agenda public communication, you are afforded two minutes.
Hello, Commission. My name is Mike I with Equality California, this nation's largest statewide LGBTQ+ civil rights organization. Thank you for taking the time to hear from me about the local LGBTQ community of interest in San Diego County. Redistricting impacts policy goals that are specific to our struggle for equality and that can be impacted by fair redistricting. That is why Equality California is engaging in the redistricting process to ensure such fair representation for the LGBTQ+ community exists. Currently, Equality California is developing a dataset and maps with 831,000 data points and growing that can be used as a guide for work to understand where our community's strength lies in the state. We know at this time that our LGBTQ+ dataset will demonstrate the strength of our community in these neighborhoods and you should expect that several members of our communities will be participating in this process as well. I am calling today because Equality California has identified very significant and geographic specific LGBTQ communities of interest in San Diego Supervisero District 4. We want to bring to your attention specifically the areas of Old Town, Mission Hills, Paseo de Mission Hills, Montecito Point, Hillcrest, The Village, and University Heights, Park Gate, Felton Heights, University Heights, Florida Gardens, Maryland Street, Townhomes, Spectrum Terrace, Palm Breeze Villas, Kensington Talmage, Laboem Condos, North Park, Penn Station, Marston Hills, Middletown, Spruce Canyon Townhome, Thorn Street Condos, Altadena, Burlington, South Park, Cambridge Square, Park Laurel, Banker Hill, and India Lofts. These areas have served as major building blocks for the San Diego LGBTQ community and have a history of voting cohesively to elect candidates of choice. We ask that these areas be kept in Supervisero District 5 or 4. Thank you for your time today and we look forward to continuing our conversation with you about the importance of representation that can be achieved through this process.
Thank you. Ellen Nash, you'll hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You'll have two minutes to address the commission. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record if you so choose.
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Ellen Nash. I serve as the Chair of the Bay Pac Black American Political Association of San Diego and I have two short questions. Number one, can you provide the list of the contractors that you referenced earlier? And number two, I would like to know if you have access to previous archived redistricting maps in regards to back to or near the Leon Williams term that was served. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to note Chair Bame that the log of correspondence received, including comments that have been submitted through the Community Builder Tool, has been updated and provided to the commissioners and is posted on the IRC website. Correspondence received is posted on the website with today's meeting materials and the commission's log of Exparte Communications has been updated on the IRC website. Not seeing any further requests to speak, that concludes non-agenda public communication. Chair Bame?
Very good. Thank you very much. I want to note that Commissioner Serbin has arrived. Before I turn to him, he's requesting the floor for something. I did want to make sure we can do this and make a direct comment to at least two of the speakers, if not three. Ms. Jones and Mr. I's comments, I think, are also completely appropriate for our public hearing. And while I certainly don't want to discourage them from speaking again during the public hearing that starts at 5:30, but I will request that we just find a way to integrate their comments into the record for the public hearing as well because they seem appropriate for that. So we'll just continue tracking that and Ms. Jones and Mr. I that specifically to make sure we've got your comments in all the places where we need them. Ms. Nash's questions, I think we'll address during the course of business today, but they seem most appropriate in this section. So again, thanks to all three speakers for that. Commissioner Serbin?
That was exactly what I was-
Perfect. Good. Sorry to anticipate and seize the floor from, very good. So moving on, the next item is approval of the minutes from the August 26, 2021 regular meeting. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
We haven't had any requests in advance of the meeting Chair B, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this matter, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand if you're participating remotely by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Chair Bame, I don't see any requests to speak, so that concludes public comment on this matter, but before requesting a motion for the approval of the minutes, there have been two edits suggested as follows. Under item number five, pre-mapping public hearing, the name Rama Awad is inadvertently listed twice. And under item eight, special counsel update, the minutes currently read, Chair Bame provided the commission an update on the process of exploring the feasibility and timing of various options for procuring the services of special counsel. It's been suggested that text be added in advance of that statement so that the total statement would read, noting the IRC's August 18, 2021 approval of the retention of Special Voting Rights Act Council, Chair Bame provided the commission an update on the process of exploring the feasibility and timing of various options for procuring the services of special counsel. If the commission concurs with the changes, I would ask that those amendments be included in the motion to approve the minutes. So the motion would be that the minutes be approved as amended. Chair Bame?
Very good. Thank you, David. Let me just ask commissioners before we move to a motion, are there any clarifying questions either on the proposed amendments that David just read or on any other matter concerning the minutes? And I will note for the record that Commissioner Diaz has joined us. Commissioner Diaz?
Apologies for being late. Thank you Chair Bame. I just wanted to, number five, and this is just a suggestion for future minutes, if we could list the affiliations or at least the neighborhoods where these members of the public addressed the commission?
I'll ask staff and the clerk if that's a possibility that we don't need to do right this minute, but for the record, could we add any that were identified or that did identify themselves?
I'm getting a nod yes from the staff so that we may-
That's it? Okay.
If that information is provided.
So we won't add that now, but Commissioner Diaz, that'll be acceptable? So as provided?
Yeah.
And we'll use that as model from here on. If they provide an organizational or other affiliation, we'll include that preceded by a comma. If they don't, we'll just list the name. Okay, good. So that's a third amendment. Any other clarifying questions or comments before we move to a motion?
So moved.
Good. So the motion to approve the minutes from the August 26, 21, 2021 minutes as amended, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, second. Commissioner Brown, thank you. Any discussion? Very good. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you Chair Bame. Commissioner Chen? Thank you. Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
I'm abstaining. I was not present during that meeting.
Commissioner Diaz abstains. Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Bame, that motion passes with Commissioner Diaz abstaining all other commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, David. Thank you, commissioners. I'll note one more time because it's agenda item five, the pre-mapping public hearing. That item is listed as the next one, but has a time certain to begin at 5:30 PM. Seeing that we are only at 4:21, I'll table this item until approximately a 5:15 suspension and a firm start time at 5:30. Moving on, we'll now move to item six, redistricting process training by Flow Analytics. As we begin this discussion and similar ones related to ADASD, our outreach contractor, I'd like to advise commissioners that our respective SPOCs are actively discussing more systemic ways to provide feedback from commissioners and as appropriate from the public to the respective contractors. And again, just to be clear, because we had a question on this, we have our demography contractor, Flow Analytics, and our outreach contractor, I'm using shorthand here, Asian Business Association San Diego. I know commissioners that you'll agree that we should give the SPOCs time to work out the best possible process for that kind of broader and deeper feedback. You may hear more details from staff between now and our next meeting, or you may see an agenda item for that meeting to this effect. In any case, I did want to mention this to you now with compliments to the SPOCs for continuing to work on this so that you can be taking notes and continue to be ready and in fact, offer comments, suggestions, and ideas today as well as in that future process to come. With all that said, let me again welcome the team from Flow Analytics to continue educating the commission and public about the IRC's important line drawing work that will be begun following the pre-mapping public hearings, which will conclude at the end of September. I'm very sorry. I'll turn in a moment to John McKenzie from Flow Analytics for an update on the subcontractor for analysis of racially polarized voting or RPV, as well as for the first part of today's training. John will be followed by presentation from Alex Brash from the Flow team. As all this is under an informational item with no commission action today, we'll hear the Flow presentations, then turn to members of the public who wish to comment, and then provide commissioners an opportunity to offer clarifying questions and comments. First though, however, let's hear from Flow's John McKenzie. John, the floor is yours. John, I think you're still muted.
Thank you for that. So a brief update on the RPV subcontractor that we are in the process of signing, finalizing, getting signatures on the contract, I believe as possibly today, possibly right now. And that process is continuing as expected and going well. And with that, I'd like to move on to what I have, which is really a very brief presentation that will cover at a very high level, the process that we'll be using to go from where we are now, which is we've got a lot of information. We've been collecting public testimony and holding all these meetings, but we have no maps. And so how do we go from here to where we need to be in a few months, which is one map that will eventually be adopted as the new district boundaries? So this is just a visual representation of really five major steps in this process and we're currently at step one, data collection. But it's really important to remember this step, data collection, it actually occurs throughout this process. That's because by data collection, we don't just mean gathering the census data or city boundaries in the county or things that we can download from the internet, right? We're also talking about collecting the data during public hearings through the public testimony received from the ecomments from the Community Builder Tool. And soon we'll be gathering data through the district scenario model tool. So this step one is a very important step and we can think of it as step one, but really, this is, this data collection is going to happen right up until we get towards the very end of this process. So the next one I want to talk about is the springboard scenarios. And you know, I bet some folks have questions about what we mean by springboard scenarios. So I wanted to first start by giving you a number and that number is 28,633. And that is the number of census blocks that are within San Diego County. And I like to think of redistricting as a big puzzle and a good way to think about this is that we've got a 28,000-piece puzzle that we have to put together. So unless you're some kind of all-star puzzle whiz like my Nana was, then you're probably a little concerned about 28,000-piece puzzle and you might want to look at that picture on the box to help put it together. I know I would. So in a lot of ways, the springboards are kind of like that picture on the box, right? They're meant to be a starting point in this process, but they're really a way that will hopefully help the commission and the public start to think about what these map options might look like. So the springboard scenarios are the commission's starting points for this redistricting process. They are not draft maps. They're designed to facilitate the development of draft maps. And the springboards are going to help visualize all this information we've gathered. So they're going to show the communities of interest that we have learned about through public testimony and that we are collecting through the Community Builder Tool. And they're also going to really help to illustrate some of the trade-offs that are going to have to take place between the different scenarios. Okay, so draft maps. Draft maps are created at the direction of the commission and they're preliminary. There can be more than one draft map. In fact, I fully anticipate there will be more than one draft map. There may be many draft maps and that is okay. They're going to reflect the public input that has been given through testimony and through maps that are submitted to the commission from the public as well. No single draft map is expected to become the final map. This is not a here's a bunch of maps, pick the one you like and adopt it type thing. No. Those maps are going to, those draft maps are going to be revised and these revised draft maps will be revised at the direction of the commission. Not all the maps may be revised. There may be a map that looks great and you don't want to revise it and that's fine too. The revised maps are meant to incorporate elements of the initial draft maps. So if there are some things you really like about a few maps and some things you don't really like, the idea is that we're going to start incorporating things that the commission likes from the different maps that are out there to start bringing these number of maps down. And as a result, there are likely going to be multiple iterations of these revised maps. And these, once again, they're tailored by feedback from the public and the commission. And towards the end of this process, as we get closer to December, there should be no more than a few of these revised draft maps. And now a revised draft map, no matter how many iterations it's been through, is likely to become the final map. Doesn't have to, but it's likely to. And then finally, the last step is the final map. And now the final map is going to incorporate IRC input, elements of the revised draft maps, and it will exercise discretion. It will uphold all statutory redistricting criteria, including the Voting Rights Act. It will reflect public sentiment. And lastly, it will be a compromise. That is for certain. So that ends my very brief, high-level overview. I hope it was helpful to sort of cover at a very high level the steps that we'll go through. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Alex Brash, who's going to give a more detailed presentation than this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thanks, John. I'm going to switch. Share my screen once you have released it. Yeah, just, no worries. There we go. All right. I believe you all should be seeing my screen at this point. Thanks again for having me. Tonight, we're going to go move beyond the census data, discuss some of the fundamentals of redistricting and particularly the mapping of revised district boundaries. As John just mentioned, there are a lot of puzzle pieces or statistical areas to consider when drawing prospective district boundaries as evidenced by this map of all the tracks within the county. So a little bit bigger geography than John talked about with all those blocks, but still a lot of puzzle pieces to consider. So as John mentioned, the springboard or the preliminary options are intended to provide that starting point and make this process a little less daunting from the beginning. So I wanted to start by going through an example to think about how we're going to work through potential changes of this area. And our area focused tonight is going to be this hypothetical county Z that we can see here. And it has a total population of 1.5 million and there's five districts, so that yields an ideal population of 306,427. And as we can see, the population is not evenly distributed among the districts, so that overall range is sitting at 12.9% due to District 3 being over the ideal at 6.5% deviation and District 1 being under the ideal at 6.4% deviation. So to balance the population, District 1 requires more residents so that the district also then needs to include more area. So we know that District 3 is overpopulated. So one means of balancing between the two is to cede some of District 3's area to District 1. And such an area could be this one outlined in orange, let's say, so we can envision moving that from District 3 to District 1. But as you all recall, one of the criteria is that the districts, all of them, need to be contiguous. And moving that area directly from District 3 to District 1 would make portions of District 1 discontinuous that have the island in the north, so to speak. So back to the drawing board, think about maybe a new option for an area that could be moved from District 3 to District 1. So that's envision this area in orange here that connects District 3 to District 1, moving through District 4. The problem and issue with this is that that narrow, you know, sinuous connection between District 3 and District 1 would make District 1 not very compact and we'll have stats to go along with compactness, shown some in previous, there's typically five or six measures of compactness. So that's infringing upon that redistricting criteria and also would be questionable and likely not a valid map. So in order to shift that population from District 3 to District 1, maybe we could enlist District 4. And you can see from the stats, you know, District 4 does have a low deviation currently, only 0.9%, but it could take on some area from District 3 in the northwest and then cede some of its area to District 1 in the south. So we want to maintain District 4 having, you know, population close to the ideal, but it could be an intermediary. So let's start with a change area between District 3 and District 4 using that area outlined in orange. At first glance, that appeared like a good potential area, but then we referenced the existing administrative boundaries and the- and the communities of interest that were submitted by the public. Showing one of them shown in purple. So we realized that this change area would then split that community of interest into into two districts. It'd be split between District Three and District Four. And something we obviously want to avoid. So to make this more of an optimal change area, we could extend the area to the West and encapsulate that entire community of interest. Next, we should look to outline an area that's going to move from District Four to District One. So you can see that in the map in in black. And that's not great because our first attempt wasn't, you know, ideal on that Western boundary. It was pretty jagged, didn't follow those easily identifiable and understandable features like the unnamed river. So if we correct that and extend the area to the West, have our change area be that area outlined in green. So now we can move that from District Four to District One. And once we make those two changes, let's see what it does to the statistics. We can see below the table that, you know, these changes result in a contiguous and compact districts. We're respecting communities of interest with this change. We're using those identifiable natural boundaries. And ultimately, we're getting the overall range two point two percent. Because when you look at those two changes in tandem, we have District Three down to just point one percent deviation, District Four to point seven percent, and District One to one point five. So something District Four and District One deviation yields that two point two percent. And that's much closer to that zero percent that we're striving for. So the prior example was moving abstract areas between those hypothetical districts. So I'm just going to reset and start again with a set of districts that has an overall range of eleven point one percent. And but uses census block geographies to display a change. So here again, District One is underpopulated, while District Four is overpopulated. So our tactic, like before, could be to cede area from District Four and give it to District One. This next map here that we're seeing includes hypothetical census blocks that are superimposed atop those districts. And they display how different the shapes and sizes of actual census blocks can be. You can see kind of the one highlighted with the arrow coming out of it, that set right there. Those actually look like actual city blocks. But as you move outside of cities, you get much larger census blocks because they're all trying to, you know, get roughly the same population. The numerical labels that I know they're small, but they're just meant to show that what the total population of those blocks are. So this is something, you know, be accessible in the tools to think about. I need to move, you know, roughly fifteen thousand to eighteen thousand people between. So that's lasso a bunch of these blocks that add up to move from District Four to District One. So we could do that by taking a bunch of census blocks as outlined by that orange area. And we can move them from District Four to District One. But note that as we drew that, the area in orange includes a portion of a large block that's outlined in blue. So it's quite large. It has just over a thousand people. You can see how how large it is. That's going to be an issue because the Census Bureau does not certify their population enumerations at a smaller geographic level than the census block. So in other words, we cannot split a census block between districts. So to make this a valid change, we could revise the area to encapsulate whole census blocks and hopefully have a total population that helps better balance populations between District Four and District One. So reviewing the statistics here, we see that the shifting of census blocks within that orange area would help reduce the overall range to three point one percent. Now, these examples touched upon a number of their districting criteria, including the first one on the top, having reasonable equal population, contiguity, compactness, the minimization of division of local neighborhoods or communities of interest, and using easily identifiable and understandable boundaries. That said, when the IRC is actually preparing district plans, drafts, you'll also be considering the additional criteria that we've talked about previously, such as the county specific criteria. And I hope that these examples acted as a beneficial primer to the map making mechanics of redistricting. And we're going to learn a lot more details about how to implement these techniques during the District Scenario Modeler Tool Training on September twenty third. So with that, I'll conclude and and open it up to questions.
Alex, thank you. John, thank you. Commissioner Inman, behind the scenes, thank you.
And the entire flow team. Thanks for all the efforts for for writing training to help us prepare for the next phase of our work, really the current phase of our work. I still have trouble with eight public puzzle pieces, not twenty eight thousand, six hundred and thirty. So this is going to be a challenge, at least for me. But that's why it's a little easier for me to just say that this information will be posted on the redistricting website, which has many other valuable training and educational presentations that the public hopefully will find useful. And I want to address that a little bit and clarify in questions and comments on what all this means for public input as well. And I'd invite commissioners to please feel free. I already see hands going up from commissioners, which is great. But first, at this time, I'd like to turn to members of the public who may wish to address the IRC on these issues. David, do we have any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Baim. None in advance of today's meeting. But if any member of the public who is participating remotely would like to address the commission on this item, you are welcome to. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Baim.
Thank you very much, David. Again, commissioners, this is an informational item, so there's no action before us tonight. But I'm glad Alex and John will stay with us. And let me just start with our virtual colleagues, Commissioner Russ, Commissioner Brown, co vice chair Katerina, Commissioner Serbin in the room. And that's the starting point. So Commissioner Russ, please go ahead.
I'm I'm glad Alex explained that to me because I I looked through this and I I wasn't sure what to make of it, quite frankly, but that was very good explanation, Alex. On your next to last slide, though, you talked about the redistricting criteria. The one that you didn't, you didn't address, though, was that second bullet. How how was this complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act? What, you know, what was it that you'd mentioned that ensures that it that it complies with the VRA?
That's going to be the result of the racially polarized voting analysis that's being done by the the sub consultant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Commissioner Russ, thank you very much for that because it's something I was looking for an opportunity to say. Commissioners, with your permission, I think we're going to schedule in one of our next few meetings a specific agenda item on Voting Rights Act. We've talked around it a bit. We've had it in some of our training. But I think something more specific and maybe linked to the training continuum will be helpful. So more to follow on that. But thank you very much, Commissioner Russ. Commissioner Brown?
Yes, I just have, thank you for the presentation. That was very helpful. I have a couple of questions in our maps that we'll be working with. Will we have overlays of the area kind of defining maybe school districts or college districts or military installations or housing so that we can make sure we're keeping those together as much as we can? Will that be involved also in addition to public comment and so forth? The
Yeah, John, do you want to take that one? I can at least mention that, yes, in some of the tools and John can elaborate. We'll see it more in the District Scenario Modeler Tool Training. But one means of it is having all of those existing administrative boundaries or community of interest in the tool. And there's a really handy kind of mechanism. It's like a green checkmark or a red X that'll help you see if those areas are split between districts and helps you resolve those those splits.
It highlights those, huh? Okay.
Yeah, that's
Oh, sorry. I was going to ask you on the unincorporated areas, that's all measured by acreage, right?
That is
Or miles or something. Okay.
And that is listed in that as well. So unincorporated areas, you'll be able to see in addition to incorporated areas. And we've, we've, that's a process that we started early on here. It was gathering those administrative boundaries that those things that we can download from the internet, you know, that was something we were able to start right away. So that's been an ongoing process and that information has been, data has been downloaded and collected and organized and sort of being set up so that as we launch the tool, all of that will be available in addition to merging it with that data that we collect through the Community Builder and the public hearing testimony.
Thank you.
Co vice chair Katerina.
Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation. It's fascinating. I'm really enjoying learning more about this. I just had two, two questions or observations. So as you went through example one, we saw the overall range drop from twelve point nine to two point two. And in your notes, you say it resulted in a lower range, lower than three percent. So I'm just curious. And of course, we want it as close to zero as possible. But is is there a range that we need to direct you to? Or is it something that is more of an industry standard that you use to determine what what that the closest range you will accept?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let if Legals here, Marguerite could potentially chime in. But I will say generally as close as we can to zero as possible. And that is something we'll be thinking about, you know, when you make trade offs of, can we, you know, accept half a percent, one percent? Because we want to keep a community of interest whole. That's something that the IRC will be thinking about when they're drawing the boundaries. It is a range.
And ten percent is the sort of the absolute cutoff. But once again, if Marguerite wants to jump in, I'd certainly, that would make sense. But yeah, ten percent is the sort of real cutoff there. But we are always trying to get as close to zero as possible. Obviously, you need to then have those trade offs where, you know, you're taking into account communities of interest. But, you know, we're trying to get that puzzle piece to fit together as nicely as possible. So we're trying to get to zero is really how we look at it.
And just for reference, when this process was completed in two thousand and eleven using the two thousand and ten census, it was approximately two point seven percent overall range.
And just for clarification, Chair, if I may?
Please, please, please.
This, the standard acceptable deviation that's presumed to be valid is actually less than ten percent. It's not ten percent, it's less than. And there are jurisdictions that set maximums, no more than two, no more than one. However, under the new law, that could be kind of constraining. And you may find yourself sending, setting the maximum, saying it's close to zero, but no greater than. But find out that that leaves out a community of interest. So maximum flexibility right now is a deviation less than ten percent and a plan that meets all the statutory criteria.
Thank you, Marguerite, for for explaining that. It's really helpful. This is just one little piece that we'll have to think about as we go down the road. My second question is related to one of our non-public agenda speakers today who talked about the LGBTQ community and that he had eight hundred, eight hundred thousand data points in District Four, which I think is just amazing. How can can we, can we use that information? And this is probably, Marguerite, you're going to have to come right back on. How how do we, how can we, how could we use that information? And and could that be incorporated into the database that that you have in place? And that's my final question.
Hi, if I may, with the permission of the Chair. That's the purpose of the public hearings. The gentleman was eloquent and he listed numerous neighborhoods. It would be helpful. Some of those neighborhoods may be well defined and they can be identified on the map. It may be helpful for that community of interest to provide a map or a definition of boundaries of the areas of concern. And then those can, as a community of interest, be taken into account in the mapping. All of this community of interest testimony needs to be put on a map and defined so that you can use them. But he was very specific in the neighborhoods. And perhaps as the process continues, they can provide more definition that can actually be put on the map.
Thank you.
So thank you, co vice chair Katerina. I think that was very, very useful and exactly reinforcing the lines, Commissioner Brown. So thanks to both of you for trying to keep things as coherent and inclusive as possible. Much appreciated. Commissioner Serbin, and then I just want to check, are there any other commissioners wanting to ask questions or comments? Commissioner Diaz? Okay, so we'll have Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Diaz, and then wrap this agenda item. Commissioner Serbin?
Thank you, Chair Baim, and thank you for the work to get us so here so far from Commissioner Inman and also from John and Alex. So Alex, the redistricting example that you went through, is that meant to provide us with a high level overview of how the springboard maps are being drafted? Being created?
I mean, those, John, feel free to jam in. But yeah, those are some of the things that we're looking at as well in the development of springboards. It's it's including and being cognizant of all the criteria to come up with a few different options and starting points.
If you don't mind, I'll I'll just jump in a little bit with the springboards. The design with the springboards is is far less about making plans that would be plans or or valid. They're more about trying to illustrate the trade offs that may have to be made as you go through the map making process. So a bigger focus would be making sure you know all of those communities of interest that we've collected and where they are and illustrating those. And we aren't, we're, we don't want to put springboards that would be, you know, have a massive deviation that would never be accepted. But at the same time, that's much less important when we're doing the springboard because it it really is an illustrative purpose to sort of help people start thinking about what those eventual maps will look like. So the criteria that Alex went through is something that we get to draft maps and revising those draft maps. We'll be looking at very carefully and following very strictly. It's just a little less so with the springboards because we do want to present a diversity of the maps as well, right? The springboard maps should not really look alike. We want to give you different options so that, once again, so it's a starting point to get you thinking more than anything else.
So the springboards are created through a process that's informed by the data collection that occurs beforehand, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so in addition to the public comments and the testimony that we're receiving, that data collection also includes a collection, a gathering of data such as school districts and other boundary data, right?
Yes.
And so the other boundary data, do we, is there? I guess I'm wondering like which, I mean, because there's tons of other jurisdictions in the county, like irrigation districts and like, you know, all kinds of other little jurisdictions. So I'm wondering, so even like the San Diego, the city of San Diego's community planning areas, do we, have we gotten? How how expansive has our data collection effort been? And I guess who decides which which of these, what, what, which data sets we're using? Or considering? Or even gathering?
I can, I can jump in first and and say that we worked with a correspondent from SAN GIS. That's the the county's GIS department in coordination of SAN DAG. They have a regional GIS data warehouse. And we gleaned a lot of information, GIS information and boundaries. And that's kind of what you're seeing in the Community Builder tool. So I'm assuming many of you have looked at it. And when you get to change those base maps and the ones that are at the top, were created by flow. Those aren't just, you know, aerial imagery versus streets. It's a lot of the things that we collected from the regional data warehouse. So I think Commissioner Serbin, you also asked a question if it was So I think Commissioner Serbin, you also asked a question if it was last year or two weeks ago about adding those community boundaries. And they have been added to the map in the Community Builder tool. So I will also look, I believe, John, we created a list before of all the data sets that we have to date. So something we could definitely prepare and share.
And so in addition to these already existing boundaries that, that, that we have, what we're doing is we're going through the process of gathering testimony from the public. And so what I'm wondering is that testimony from the public, how is that being quantified in a way that it's being captured in the springboard maps? I guess another way to ask, I guess another way to ask the question is, if I were a member of the public, what would you tell me to, if I were to ask you, what, what data do you want from me? So that I can most effectively engage with this commission and provide the information that you need to create these springboard maps?
So the ideal piece is actually, I think we got great examples of from the two, from two of the public comments that were made earlier today where they were very descriptive in describing, not just what, what aspects made their community of interest, but also describing the geography of their community of interest so that it can be more easily translated into a map. That's extremely useful because all of these public comments that we collect will ultimately be translated into a map. So they will be drawn onto a map. And that, so that they can be quantified and included in the tool. So for me, as a, from a data perspective, it is being able to describe the boundaries of that neighborhood so that it can be placed on a map.
So is it fair to say that the most effective public comment would be comment that contains a discernible polygon? One that we can draw on a map, right? That's what you just said?
That's, that's what I said. And I want to recognize my bias as a data nerd. And if Legal has something more to add, then I would, I would welcome that as well.
You know, with the permission of the Chair,
Please.
There has to be some geographical definition of the community of interest that can be placed on an, on a map. Otherwise, it, it, we, well, it's going to be a free-floating community of thought is not going to be able to be mapped. But in so long as that free-floating community of thought has specific interests and those interests can be either identified geog- in a geographical manner or focused on geography, then they, they should be, otherwise they can't be taken into account in the mapping.
Thank you, Council, and also thank you, Alex.
Yeah, one really quick, before we move on, really quick, just wanted to say at the very bottom of the Community Builder tool, there is a hyperlink that says Source Data Overview, and that'll take you to a PDF. And it's translated depending on what languages you chose at the top. And it lists the items in GIS data that were gleaned from that regional data warehouse, if that's helpful.
Thank you for that. Okay, I have Commissioner Diaz, then Co Vice Chair Garcia, and then I'm going to close the floor for, and then Commissioner Pons. Let's hear what those three commissioners have to say. And then Commissioner Inman, we will explore the best way to handle things on the next agenda item. For now, though, Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair Bam. I guess this piggybacks off of another, the question that Commissioner Servin was bringing up about how do we incorporate the public testimony in this? And that was one of my concerns actually, because we're dealing with the the qualitative and quantitative data essentially. And then we want to create a visual map from that. I guess my, my concern is because we've had such an outpouring of public comments already, and we're already more than halfway through our pre-map sessions in, in public meetings. So it's, it's, I would suggest that we make it very clear to the public, have some kind of guidance. And I may be working with the public engagement consultant in creating a template that says, here are the, the data points, sort of how you can describe your community. Because sometimes it's not clear to the public on what to report about how to define their community and in defining those boundaries. So I would really love that to be added to this process if it's not already. I think it would be very helpful. And I'm more than happy to work with other commissioners to develop that and our consultant to develop that. So that we, that, because that's going to be very useful coming, moving forward, especially when we're doing the draft maps. So the other thing I, question I had was, so considering that the statewide database is releasing the updated version of the data, September, can you clarify, September 23rd or the 20th coming up? How is that going to be incorporated in the springboard scenarios? If, if at all? And and, and would that change at all, or does that change this current process that we're, that we're now underway with this springboard? And I guess my, my concern would be just making, ensuring that we're starting, we're starting from a point where that it's most accurate with the full information that we have.
If I, if I may, Chair, Chair Bam, Chair Bam, if I may, we're going to cover that, Commissioner Diaz, we're going to go through the timeline. And so we'll discuss exactly the sequence of events. And it'll include your questions specifically about what comes first, second, third, and fourth in the process. So.
Good, thank you for that, but does that cover it for now? Okay, and, and we'll take the suggestion under advisement too. And my sense is in the upcoming agenda items on outreach, we can talk about that a little bit more. Okay, good for now. Co Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Bam, and thank you to Flow Analytics for that excellent presentation. I have really, I think, kind of simple questions. The first two, the first one is, do we have any idea how many of these springboard maps you're going to throw at us? I'm just curious, is it, what are we looking at there?
Three or four. We try not, yeah, they're not a ton. Mostly it is sort of illustrating at a very high level, some of the trade offs, sort of get your, get the ball rolling type of scenario. There's not going to be a ton of them.
Okay, great. And my second question has to do with public input. How are we to deal with, we keep talking about, you know, public comment and, and how we're going to try and incorporate public comment into these maps. But how are we to take public comment? That makes one, you know, sort of from one citizen who is requesting, you know, is trying to let us know about a community of interest or some other priority for their, that they have. And another set of public input, but which has, you know, 50 or 100 or, in other words, where we have a situation where there are many, many, many citizens testifying to one, you know, sort of one request, basically, one ask. I want, I would like to see a community, I would like to see a district that looks like this. So I'm just curious, how, how should the commission deal with that? Or how do you, how do you plan to deal with it?
What, what we will do is we will quantify it so that you will see them. And you will see that, yeah, 50 people said this was a community of interest. And maybe there is only one person here. We don't want to make the call that those 50 people, there was more valid than this one person. But we do want to give you the information that 50 people said this community of interest, this was a community of interest, whereas only maybe there were a handful somewhere else. Then we would, we would work at the direction of the commission to help, you know, make revisions or to draw the maps in accordance. But we would want to give you all the information available about it, but not make that type of decision ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And before I turn to Commissioner Pons, I just want to reinforce that particularly for members of the public. John, I think you put it very well. Having an idea of the scale of that should help us to make some informed decisions. But as John, Alex, Margery, and several commissioners have made clear, there's a whole host of requirements we need to deal with here. And that's where our familiarity, not just with the process, but with the districts where we reside and our ability to listen to the public will be very, very helpful. Because it may be that that, that one individual may have an idea that helps us bridge several of those different factors that I think Alex laid out very well. So it's a long way of saying, I do want to encourage members of the public, whether they're part of a large group or just an individual. That may still be the, the magic solution we need. So I, I do want to continue to emphasize maximum public interest. I really appreciate the comments and dialogue on that. And with that, I'll turn to Commissioner Pons.
Yes, thanks for the brief. Outstanding. So let me go to the issue of semantics. And you used the word reflect testimonials in your brief. And I would just ask you to maybe change that to strongly consider testimonials and submissions by the public. It's just about managing and setting expectations, but that's just something that we can think about. Because when you got thousands of testimonies and submissions, I don't think we can reflect all of them. But we can look for trends in those testimonies. And I think I brought that up about three meetings ago, so just consider that. But no, the second question is, or comment is, you know, you use block data in your example. So in the history and your experience, has this process been more malleable when you use track data? Instead of block data, when you're trying to nest and re-nest and maintain that continuous, that you know, so they're nested together? Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it better, easier to use that, track data instead of block data?
Well, so census blocks will fit nicely into block groups and block groups fit nicely within the tracks. So there's this nice nesting going on. But yeah, you're right, a good tactic really, when you're at, you know, the starting scale of thinking about major changes. It would be better to start with tracks or block groups because you're kind of, they're easily manageable, they're larger. You see the total population, can change those between. And then when we get to blocks is when we're really going to be working on the edges, where we're going to try to make it, you know, comply with communities of interest and municipal boundaries and, and make it coincident with existing natural or administrative boundaries. So we'll have all of those to work with him.
Great. So maybe the next example, you can use track data so we can get a sense of, you know, compare and contrast the usage of track versus block data. Thank you.
And one of these days I will learn that the translation of me saying I'm closing the floor to comments means I'm inviting more comments because I now have two more commissioners who want to speak. But given where we are on time, I think that's, it's probably a good idea to keep the discussion going because it is so valuable. Thank you for that, Commissioner Pons. I have Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Servin.
I'd just like to offer a little strategy that I use when I'm reading the ecomments or when we're in a public hearing and people are discussing. Instead of taking my notes on a piece of paper, I take them on a map. And I actually brought maps tonight for any of you that commissioners who might like to have them. And so when someone is describing their community of interest, I find it on this map. And this map, this shows all five districts. The public is referring to districts as they are now. And I can find it on here. There are enough points of reference that, that list other things on the map that helped me to locate the spot. And then I just put a circle around it, write in the margins or do something like that. And I've been using some of these maps for several weeks now as we've been collecting data. And I think I had them last time and Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Russ noticed it and I gave them a map at that meeting. And I just, I think it's a great tool and, you know, you'll have to indulge me as the old social studies teacher, but it works. So instead of a blank sheet of paper, take your notes on a map.
Thank you very much for that. And I think the appreciation is visible in the smiles at the table and on the screen. So thank you sincerely. Thank you for that. Commissioner Servin briefly, and then we'll close out this agenda item and figure out what we'll do next, given that it's 5:11 PM, and that is a hint. But first, Commissioner Servin.
Thank you. So to follow up on Commissioner Garcia's question, what I understood was that for those comments, if we receive individual comments that are identical in advocating for a specific community of interest, then those would be tallied and then shown on the map as this community of interest received X number of comments and support. So I'm wondering if one individual comment were to say, I'm the president of so-and-so organization and I'm speaking on behalf of Y number of members and we're advocating for so-and-so community of interest. How, how is that, how would that piece of testimony be treated?
Well, I hadn't thought of that, but just being perfectly honest here. However, I can think that that is something we can indicate in a map. So that's something that we could denote so that that community of interest was on behalf of a larger, larger organization. We could use some sort of visual indicator. Our maps always have these pop-ups, so if you hover over them, they will explain what's, give you some more information sort of than, than you can see just by staring at, at the map itself. So that's a, that's a really good point. And thank you for bringing that up. And I think, but like I said, you know, it's not something I had previously thought of, but it is something that we have the tools to sort of make that information readily available to you, which is, like I said, that's what really we want to do is give you all of the information so that you can make the best decisions. And if that's information that you need to make the best decisions, then we're going to figure out, I get it on a map and put it, and give it to you.
John? And again, I think Commissioner input will be important on all that as well. Bring your considerable knowledge to bear. All right, seeing no other requests for comment, I want to again, thanks Alex, Alex and John and the whole team, as well as Commissioner Inman for helping put that together. Again, the education will continue and I'm sure I, I'll stop calling you Commissioner Hanson, say former teacher Hanson will remind us of all the resources and different ways we can learn about it. Because look, different learning styles need to be accommodated. So thanks. Just to close this out, I, I did want to mention on a tonal issue. We've had the words compromise and trade offs come off several times. And I just want to assure the public, and I think all commissioners would agree, those are not with the negative connotations of, of loss of something that are sometimes attached to those words. When we're talking about trade offs, we're talking about trade offs where different factors that we have to address need to be dealt with. Those, some of those factors are laid out in priorities according to Election Code and Voting Rights Act requirements and such. And some are things we're legitimately going to have to talk about in light of the different input we have and the different ways we're looking at it. The same for compromise. It's not compromise in the sense that we're compromising one group's or one person's interests. It's finding a way to bridge the gap so that we can put together a coherent map that serves all the people that we're listening to, that we're receiving input from, and I hope on multiple occasions. So even if there's only one set of inputs at the beginning, once we see more of the springboard scenarios and particularly the draft maps, I would hope and expect members of the public to come back to us with comments on those. And it will be kind of an extended by-distance dialogue, at least for a little while. And hopefully that will help us, guide us towards a more coherent, willing process as John described, that will eventually take us to a final map. So again, Alex, John, thank you very much for all that. Commissioners, thank you for the robust discussion. Seeing that it's now 5:15, let me ask Commissioner Inman, who's Seeing that it's now 5:15, let me ask Commissioner Inman, who's going to be doing a presentation in the next agenda item. I'm thinking that perhaps I'll just offer some introductory remarks now that commissioners can be thinking about during the break and as we prepare. And then we'll have the public hearing. At the end of that public hearing, we'll shift as quickly as possible to your presentation. Commissioner Inman, is that a good way to proceed?
Yes, that makes perfect sense. Thanks.
Great. So let me go ahead and open the agenda item, which is item seven. For the record, demographic services update, including discussion and possible approval of timeline for IRC mapping activities, draft map, public hearings, in addition to special meetings by single point of contact commissioner Ken Inman and Flow Analytics. That's a lengthy title. What does it come down to? It's an update with a possible action item to approve a timeline. That is the timeline that you have in your package with some slides, but it's this timeline that we're talking about. See if we get close enough, if we get past this blur problem, but it's the, the single page that's laid out as a chart. And we'll get that up on the screen either now or later. Yep. And it's just draft for now. I will note that in our previous agenda item, we talked generally about how the IRC will move through the mapping process, and we even previewed a little bit of the discussion to come. This next item will lay out a detailed draft timeline for the IRC to undertake its line drawing work beginning in October, with an eye towards how to best complete that work in time for the statutory deadline of December 15th. That agenda item again includes some presentation materials that Commissioner Inman will deliver when we come back. But noting that it is now 5:17, I'm going to go ahead and suspend the meeting. Commissioner Inman, did you want to add anything else? Very good, thank you. So I'm going to suspend our regular meeting. I'll ask commissioners to be back in place around 5:27, 5:28, so that we can start promptly at 5:30. I will note for the moment that there are no members of the public physically with us, but I would not be surprised if we have virtual participants for the public hearing. So please be ready at 5:28, and we'll start promptly at 5:30. This meeting is recessed until 5:30. Thank you. Okay. Almost everyone back. And virtually. Good. We'll be starting in just a moment. All right. Noting the time is 5:31, I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us today for this pre-mapping public hearing of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission, also known as the IRC. It is a great honor to be here today to connect the next of the IRC's pre-mapping public hearings, to hear from you, the public, the people who are here in person, as well as our virtual guests. We're glad to have you. We'll be taking public input today about your neighborhood, your district boundaries, and your communities of interest. I want to note that today's format is indeed a public hearing, which means due to legal requirements, that the commission may not discuss or take action on the public input offered today, except to ask brief clarifying questions, or to place an item brought up in public comment on the agenda for a future IRC meeting, or as you may have just heard in our regular meeting, as part of our ongoing effort to collect public input so that we can carry out our map drawing responsibilities appropriately. This is in effect a listening session for us, the IRC, to hear from you, the public. We want to listen and learn as much as we can about your communities. And again, it's critical for us to hear that because it will inform the work we undertake of drawing new boundaries for the election districts of the five members of the County Board of Supervisors later this fall. Hearing from the public at these pre-mapping public hearings intentionally comes before the line drawing work that the IRC will take up beginning in early October. Let me now turn to the IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Bane. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak to the commission during today's meeting, to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at san diego county.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to speak to the commission complete a form in advance for planning purposes. Individuals participating remotely are asked to submit an online request, and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff has speaker slips available. Having said that, all timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting, either in person or remotely, will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Chair Bane?
Thank you, David. We now move to the roll call. David, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. And I ask the commissioners to say here or present when I call your name. Chair Bane?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Dostal?
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ?
Here.
Commissioner Servin?
Here.
Thank you, Chair Bane.
Thank you, David. And so to kick off tonight's public hearing, let me turn to Commissioner Arv Larsen, who will begin the presentation. Arv, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Chair Bane. Here's what we're going to be covering today. We will begin with a brief presentation, as you will see on screen. First, we will prepare, prepare a refresher on redistricting. Second, we will explain what to expect in this redistricting, pre-mapping, public hearing. Third, we will provide a brief overview of our community builder tool. And finally, and most importantly, it will be your turn. We need your input, because as you will find out, your participation is very important to us. And to help us understand who is attending these public hearings, and to assure that we are and to assure that we are reaching as many people as possible, please fill out the postcards on your seats that were handed out to you when you arrived. Or if you're joining us virtually, please visit the website to fill out the voluntary survey. Okay, the next slide here is what is redistricting? Specifically, what is redistricting in San Diego County? Well, let me tell you. Redistricting is the process of redrawing district boundaries for each of our five supervisory districts so that each has a reasonably equal population. We attempt to redraw new boundaries every 10 years based on census data. As you may know, our federal government conducts a yearly census, or a census every 10 years when it counts all individuals residing in the United States and at the location where they are at that time. The census data reveals what population changes have occurred over the past 10 years, and there are usually quite a few changes. There are changes in the growth in some areas, decline in other areas, and many other ways that our population and our social structure change over a 10-year period. We're a very dynamic society. We redistrict or redraw new district boundaries, which serve to rebalance these districts for fairness and equal representation. Next slide. Here are the specific criteria that the IRC is required by law to use. The criteria on this slide are listed in the order of priority in which they may be applied. First, districts must be a reasonably equal population. This rule is required by the U.S. Constitution. Secondly, we must create a map that complies with the Federal Voting Rights Act to ensure that minority populations have fair opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. The third priority is districts must be contiguous, that is, so all parts of the district are connected to each other. Fourth, districts must minimize the division of cities, neighborhoods, and communities of interest to the extent possible. And fifth, districts must be geographically compact such that nearby areas of population are not bypassed by more distant populations. This requirement refers to density, not shape. In addition, we cannot consider the place of residence of any incumbent or any political candidate in the creation of the map, nor can we draw districts for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against an incumbent, a political candidate, or a political party. Now, on the map that you're looking at, we are showing the changes in our county between 1991 and 2011. That is, over three census periods, the county has changed significantly in that time, and we expect that since, over the last 10 years, it has also changed. And that's what we're going to be addressing. Now, the criteria that is specific to our county here is additional criteria which apply only to our county. That is, three of the five districts must include unincorporated areas. And of course, you can look at the map and see that the unincorporated areas serve the bulk of the county geographically. We're a huge county. But the unincorporated areas must be included in at least three of the five districts. And furthermore, two of these districts must be comprised primarily of unincorporated areas. So as a point of reference, the County of San Diego includes 18 incorporated cities, and they're mostly in the western part of the county, as you can see on the map. And most of the county is unincorporated territory. That is, land which is outside of the boundaries of the 18 incorporated cities, such as San Diego City and Tula Vista and so forth. Now, for District Four specifically, the chart we're looking at shows District Four. It encompasses about 100 square miles within the city of San Diego and is celebrated as the most ethnically diverse district in the county. And it's shaped in a way that goes from the ocean down here to this other corner that we're in right now in the Malcolm X Library area. So our county boundaries go from the University of San Diego to the north, the Pacific Ocean on the west, east going out to Encanto, and south down to Paradise Hills. But a very complex district and one that is certainly going to be a focus of what we do here in our commission. So now let me introduce Commissioner Sonia Diaz, who will continue this discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson. It's a pleasure to be here in my home district. I grew up just a couple miles from here, actually. I'm going to present to you the next slide and why we're all here today. So why does redistricting matter? Redistricting matters because how maps are drawn and how communities and neighborhoods get grouped together or separated can affect whose voices are heard on Election Day for the next decade. Redistricting done properly ensures that communities have a fair opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. In our case of the IRC, we will draw new district boundaries for the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the governing body of the County of San Diego. The Board of Supervisor is responsible for making decisions about how the county's budgets get allocated. And as you can see in the slide, this is the current budget, $7.23 billion. That's B dollars. County services, such as our public health, social services, election services, voter registration, as you can see, the list goes on. So county supervisors make decisions about these things that affect you. So your ability to have a fair chance at electing a supervisor who represents you is why redistricting is so important. Next slide. We've defined redistricting and described the criteria we'll use. Now I'll explain what information or data we will use for redistricting. It comes primarily from two sources. First, we have the 2020 census data obtained from the last census count. We will provide a quick peek at some of the numbers from the census in a moment. Second, we use your public input, information we gather from you today to help us learn about and understand communities of interest. And now I'll turn it over to, sorry, continue. Community of interest. What is that, you might ask? So for short, it means, or COI for short, is a continuous population that shares common social or economic interests that should be grouped together within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. Communities of interest are not defined by their relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. A community of interest might be defined by the common language or culture that you share. And a neighborhood that is adjacent to a shipping port could identify itself as a community of interest because it shares common interests pertaining to dealing with the impacts and effects of having a shipping port as a neighbor. Other examples are so this information about communities of interest comes from the public, from people telling us about their community. And sometimes the census data will actually inform us about these neighborhoods and communities. And here are some questions to help you identify and define your community. Does your neighborhood, for example, share certain celebrations or festivals? Like street fairs or parades? Are there important places where your community gathers, like parks or community centers? What are some historical things that bind you all together, a shared history, for example? Other questions you might ask is you, are you a part of a community who has issues that have not been adequately addressed by your elected representatives? Has your community come together to advocate for important services, better schools, roads, or health centers in your neighborhood? Have you worked for more recognition or support of your community, like having holidays recognized or historical events commemorated? These are just some examples. Next slide. We hope you have heard how important your input is to us today. Here are the ways you can provide it. So one is you can provide your input at this public hearing or any of our future public hearings, and we have three more coming up. Find dates and times on our website. You can submit written testimony at any time, be it email or regular mail. You can draw a map even on a piece of paper and submit it. Or you can also submit it electronically using our Community Builder Tool. In all cases, provide as much detail as you can about your community, the correct characteristics or issues that bind you together and why you should not be separated. So here's an example of our Community Builder Tool that has been developed by our consultant, Flow Analytics, and it's available on our redistricting webpage, which we'll provide in a minute. This tool is designed to help the public submit information about their community. And we understand we can't simply download data from the internet for every community of interest. So we really encourage members of the public to use this tool to help us gather the data that we can't find on the internet. It's a critical part of this process, and Flow has tried to make the tool as accessible and user-friendly as possible. If you follow these steps on the screen, it will take you to the tool where you can find instructions in an animated GIF that will show you how to use it. And now we want to move away from just talking about it and show the actual 2010 and 2020 census data and how they compare with the population totals for the current supervisory districts. This table shows both years and each of the current five supervisory districts. The ideal population is total divided by five. It is the population redistricting tries to achieve for each district. Percent deviation is district population divided by ideal population. This shows as a percentage how far a district is from ideal value. One goal of redistricting is to get these deviations as close to zero as reasonable. By definition, the 2010 districts do have reasonably equal populations, and as expected, changes have occurred over the last 10 years, such that districts now are more out of bounds. In 2010, the ideal population was 619,063 people. Due to the population growth, that's increased now to 659,727. Because that growth was uneven across districts, District Three's deviation is now over the ideal by 1.7%. That is changed from 2010, where it is now under ideal by only 0.2%. District One is now under ideal by 2.8%. In 2010, it was under by 1.5%. The overall range, defined as a largest deviation minus the smallest deviation, has increased going from 2.7 to 4.5%. For reference, the calculation for 2010 is 1.2 minus 1.5%, and for 2020, excuse me, is 1.7 minus negative 2.8%. I know that's a lot of numbers I'm throwing out, but as you can see from the slides, the difference in population change. So in Slide 13, we have that, okay. This table shows the population changes behind the increase overall range for 2020. The overall county growth rate from 2010 to 2020 is 6.6%. District Three grew faster than the county at 8.6% also, and so had increased deviation for 2020. District One grew slower than the county at 5.2% and so had a reduced deviation. Next slide. I'm going to now pass it over to Commissioner Hanson, and she'll continue with the process and discuss what it looks like.
Hi. I'm Barbara Hanson, and I'm also a District Four resident. My husband came to Miramar Naval Air Station in the early 70s as a pilot for the Navy on his way to Vietnam. When he got out of the Navy, he settled right down in the Claremont neighborhood. And many of the people that live there today are those same guys that bought a little house in Claremont when they got out of the Navy. But we're in the northern, north-central part of District Four. This whole redistricting process is regulated by law. And we, as an independent redistricting committee, must follow the rules that guide our decision-making. The first thing we started to do was to hold public meetings. We've been meeting every other week since last October, when the first part of our commission was identified. The schedules meeting are twice monthly on Thursdays, and we gather public testimony at those meetings through people who call in because we've been meeting via Zoom up until a few weeks ago. After that, we were to start these pre-mapping public hearings, and this is one of eight or nine of those that will be held in the next few weeks. Each one of our districts has had at least one meeting in the district, and this is the one for District Four. All through this process, we've been gaining public testimony. People have either called in or written in or emailed us to tell us about their view of the county supervisory district map and to offer specific suggestions on things that could make it fair for their communities of interest. After we actually draw maps with the assistance of our mapping consultant, we will publish those and conduct post-mapping public hearings for the public again to come in and comment on the decisions that are being made. We are an independent commission of citizen volunteers. We operate completely independently from the influence of the Board of Supervisors, and we are responsible only to you, the public, in our duty to draw fair and accurate maps for the county. You may realize that this is a new system. This independent commission is a result of new state laws that take the decision-making about districting at all levels away from the public or from the elected officials and back in the hands of the citizens. You'll see in this list the eight public hearings that have been scheduled so far. We have been in Miramesa, Benita, Escondido. We're here today. We have one in Carlsbad and Vista and Spring Valley coming up. Two of those are on Saturdays to try to help accommodate people who can't come on a weekday afternoon. Even though you're here today in the District Four meeting, you could come to another district meeting if you wanted to. This slide shows you our redistricting timeline. The section in green represents the beginning of our really active work on drawing together the information for the map-making process. We're coming to the end of that on September 23rd, which is when we expect to get the census data that has been developed at the state level. The timeline shows the activities and the timing that the IRC is planning from now until the final map is adopted. We're currently in the pre-mapping. We're currently in the pre-mapping stage. The data is being processed by the State California's redistricting database as we speak, and we expect to receive that in late September. Then begins the drawing of the maps. Shortly thereafter, to mid-October, each draft map will be published for public comment, and we will also be holding at least two public hearings during this map drawing phase to hear from the public about the proposed district boundaries. Finally, we will adopt a final map for the county. The current deadline for that map adoption is December 15th. However, the dates, including the final map adoption, are subject to change. And let me make a quick comment about why our timeline is subject to change. You may know that the census data was delayed. In fact, it was delayed more than once. The IRC has officially requested an extension of this deadline to January 14th in response to the most recent delays. So stay tuned. Our priority is to ensure that the public has ample opportunity to prepare, to participate in the redistricting process, and to also ensure that we have the time we need to gather all the information to draw fair and accurate maps. We are committed to ensuring this in the case whether the deadline remains or is extended. One of the reasons that we hoped to extend it was because we hated to see it follow in the holiday season, when everyone was busy with other things and might not have a final chance to speak up, but we don't know yet whether that will happen. On the board now, you'll see all the ways that you can communicate with us. First of all, we have a website, drawyourcommunity.com, and emailing at redistricting@san diego county.ca.gov. Any information that you see can be found on our website, including links to the Community Builder tool, frequently asked questions, email requests to subscribe to our newsletter, meetings and schedules and agendas. I also might ask, there's an opportunity on there for you to request a speaker if you're a part of a community of interest and you would like somebody, one of us, to come out and talk to your group on behalf of District 4. Now, this concludes our overview to kick, so I'm going to kick this back to the, sorry, start over. This concludes the overview presentation to kick off this pre-mapping public hearing, and now we'll get to the heart of why we were here, which is to hear from you. At this time, I'd like to turn to our clerk, David Hall, to tell us about any public speakers.
David?
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. We have one speaker who has requested to address the commission in person. We have three individual speakers and two group presentations who have requested to address the commission remotely. I'd also like to note that we have received 26 ecomments and two letters for this hearing that either have been or will be distributed to the commission and posted online. The commission will first hear from those in person who have submitted requests to speak. Next, I'll call on those who are participating remotely who have submitted requests to speak. Then we will hear any remaining public comment from those present. Even if you haven't filled out a speaker slip or choose not to give your name, the commission would still welcome your comments. Finally, we'll hear from any remaining public comment from those participating remotely. Each speaker, each individual speaker will be afforded three minutes, and each group presentation will be afforded 10 minutes. So I'll begin with the individual who has requested to address the commission in person, Samantha Jenkins. Please approach the podium. And if you so choose, please begin by stating your name for the audio record, and you have three minutes to address the commission.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Samantha Jenkins. I am here as the Chair of the Skyline Paradise Hills Planning Group and wanting to speak to the interests of the diverse communities that you mentioned earlier in District 4. I wanted to let the commission know that I am a part of a resident-driven effort to create a map that will be submitted to the commission regarding the interests of southeastern San Diego and ensuring that we are able to maintain the contiguous nature of our diverse population and their interests. As you all know, we have a strong AAPI, African-American and Latinx population that is very actively and politically and culturally engaged in our community, and they are all highly invested in maintaining the interests and the cultural touchstones that are present in our community, and we hope that the commission will take into consideration our future offering of a map and the preservation of our interests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Fillet, you're welcome to come forward.
Thank you, Patricia Fillet, accent mark over the E. As you know, Old Town is the birthplace of California, as we'd like to say, and my family has been there for over 120 years. So we know it's vital to keep Old Town as diverse as it is, protect our cultural, historical, and our public history. We love to think that it's a living history. We have over 7 million visitors. That's not including the population for San Diego. I wonder what that would be, but we're so happy that many, even residents of San Diego County, come to visit Old Town just for that dynamic experience. We have four distinct periods that we recognize and that are taught in our public schools. So we need to maintain the historical sensitivity of our areas. And for infrastructure, of course, everybody would love infrastructure support. So taking the bigger picture for Old Town, which ties into our Presidio and we share with other communities that are just up the hill, shows the history and development, and then how Old Town kind of slipped back and then revitalized. So we need to maintain that story for all Californians, the entire nation, and for our San Diego County residents, and I hope you take that into consideration, maintain our public history. And we want our fourth grade program to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, move to those participating remotely who have submitted an advanced request to speak, beginning with Janine Ericat. You'll see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself, Janine.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Janine Ericat.
Yes.
Hi, thank you all. Good evening, commissioners. As you all know, I'm with Pana, a research public policy community organizing hub that serves thousands of African, Middle Eastern, Muslim, South Asian immigrant refugee communities in San Diego. Again, I want to thank you for offering interpretation for today's meetings and all the work you've done to make this meeting as accessible as possible for underrepresented communities. For this meeting, we're really excited. We have two group community presentations who we've set up the tech remotely and have been coordinating with your staff. We're excited for you to be able to see them on camera during their presentation, and you'll hear from our Somali and Oromo community members who've resided in City Heights for over 30 years, and they'll describe their experience and how they define their community. And they're excited to talk about their experiences and concerns around language access and resettlement. And although we wanted to come in person to Malcolm X Library, there were concerns around COVID, and so we're at the local school in City Heights, Iftan Charter School. As you can see, I have the whole community standing back here behind me and will be presenting during the group presentation. Again, I just wanted to uplift the importance of City Heights and El Cajon as refugee hubs and the importance of refugees in our county and the county's responsibility and role in refugee resettlement. Again, I won't speak on behalf of the county, and we're excited for their group presentation shortly. So thank you all for your time, and just let us know when we can hand it over to the community members who are here today.
Let's go ahead and move into the group presentation. Before we go ahead with that, can we make sure we've got the picture from their group on the screen in front of us here? I've got it on, there we go, perfect, thank you.
And because there is interpretation used with this group presentation, you'll be afforded 20 minutes.
Thank you. Are we ready to begin? Can I hand it off?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Here they go. Who would like to go first?
This is for Oromo community. My name is Salio Osman. Actually, I'm a translator for Oromo communities, so my Oromo community is behind me, so they're going to speak in their native languages, so I can translate it for you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Durandursi Galatoma, Charraha Nuhanu Gheisaneef, Almaka Ankhia, Hussain Abdul Qadir Ayemo Jama, Jirata Magala San Diego. Yeah, I'm a Yechubar Badhe, Nutaaka Hawasa, Jirata Magala Sanda Guti, Hawas Nukun Hawasa Bala Ra, Hawas Uwane Duto Liti, Erkate Tijin Jirata, Kesa Tu, Hawas Nukun Gertey, Lemangurovi, Lemesa Vi, South San Diego, City El Cajon, Spring Valley, City Highting, Kungutmati, Hawas Toko, Okato Kudubatu Ante, Ak Gertey, Ak Gertey, Te Suma La Fab, Bali Na Jiru Hanata Kateshuma Toko Wama Menubar Banna, Kanu Ma Fu, Charrana Khanu Gheisaneef Galatoma, Afan Oromotin Yerounda, Namafan Nukul Akanu Vidan, Esiri Tiyachah, Galatoma Esininga Chubar Bana, Galatoma.
Okay. I say, my name is Hussain Abdul Qadir Ayemo. So I'm a resident in the city of San Diego for the last 11 years. So first of all, thank you for inviting us to be held on this meeting. So my request is as residents of City Heights area, we have been living this area for a long time, so we need to come together, our communities be together, and I need to bring another, our neighboring communities, which is like Spring Valles, Encantos, all these areas supposed to be come together, like San Diego, City Heights, City of El Cajon, come together, so I need it. Furthermore, we have been struggling in our city of San Diego for language translation when in public affairs area, like especially in schools, in DMVs, in hospitals, and some natural resource areas like Walferas Office, we needed special, our people who speak our native language, we need translator in according to our languages. So please, thank you for me to offer to me this chance, I'm really appreciative, he says that. Thank you. Okay, there is another person from Oromo community, so he's going to speak him out, so I can go translate it again.
... community Oromora, Durandursi, Makankia, Noor Adenangiani, Oneina Sertufi Amantana, Akakomuniti Oromo City High Granuti, Oneihimachura Durakina Umatake Nyaoromorefi, Jiru Gheisah Hawas Nukun Gudara, Bakka Akademie Vi, Corti School Avi, County Unda, Any County Unda Tira Kena Gudara Abduromon, Kanavu Ante Betcha, Aketret Afan Oromo Nafanke Nukutret Nukudete, Yo Afana Ka, Akavan Somali, Akavan Spanish, English, foreign language, Barudafi, Afan Translate Afan Nukudete, Hedo Barbatsara, Jolle Kenyafi, Namafanyafille, Fuldura Wankana, Kanu Watan, Esabdiha Wita Ba, Amal Le Oneitianse, Hanayjou, Yo Jirata, Kabra, County San Diego, Lemon Grovi, Lemesa Ra Vi, Spring Valley, San Gundo Leti, Marju, Akata Katak, Revudikudak Edira Kuremyda, Umunata Kafi, Faradok Bano, Aknu Too, Barbadah, Kanavu Do, Charraha Nakane Asetewa, Kanadubatu Kenyafi, Dugala Thomas, Nindja, Thank you very much.
Yes, again, translating in English. My name is Noor Aden. I'm a resident, resides in City of San Diego or City Heights area for the last 17 to 18 years. So all my children is born in City Heights area. So the main reason is for my dad, my mom, everybody who live with, reside with me. So they don't speak English, but they want to need to, people who need to translate their languages, everything, DMVs, Walfer Office, hospitals, all public affairs areas, they need in court too, especially in court, they need it. And also, we need to be marginalized, stay together, not disintegrated. We need to come together as one community, as one unit. We share the same bordering neighborhood cities like El Cajon Cities, Lemesa, Spring Valles, Encantos, and all Chilovistas. So Lemanguro, all these cities are supposed to be marginalized with us. So thank you very much for offering this chance, so I'm really appreciative for your passport to these conferences.
Durandursi Charraha Kananakin, Nutaaf Baye Galatoma Jada, Itte An Sudam Makankiya, Hindia Tahiro Jada Ma, Waga Kuda Sadhi Fin, Biyatanake Sajra. So Yan Kiyeka Jara Ting Gar Garin Juru, Akku Majer Jetteka, Ya Dumajer Ahting Kaba. Wae Afan Hika, Kanabai Eba Era Kootte, Kamna Nuthira Chala, Oridu Barti, Abai E, Ittirak Kanna, Bakkaman Haakimati, Ha Wotin Hedun, Hugu Gara, Akavaniwachu Luwani Afan, Namah Hiku Fink Abani, Biyabrara Ya Mama Fi, Osodanta Ami, Asiber Bada Me, Tinin Asuma, Nu Bar Bada Ni, Infeda, Akasumas, Bakka Skula, Managargarsana Ma, Kenam, Ni Fi Kana, Kanka Fakka De, Akkanu Ma Fu, Kanarate, Akanudale, Idani, Nisinin Jada, Galatoma.
Another Oromo speakers, which means her name is Hindia Tahiro. She resides in City of San Diego for the last 13 years and plus, so all my children is born over here. So especially, we have been suffering a lot with translation of our native languages when we went in clinic, hospitals, so even if the people that bring in hospitals and over the phone, bring them up from different status, so we don't understand that guy's languages because our accent language, since we come from East African area, we speak different languages. So we need a people from among us who can speak our native languages, that will be better if we got a person from our communities, from our residential areas, very good. So as...
If you can hear us, hold off, your feet is frozen for a moment, so we're going to see if we can reconnect. Okay, well, why don't I go on to another speaker while you see if you can reconnect with them. I'll go to an individual speaker, Ali Hori.
Hello, we are back from Oromo communities. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now. We can hear you and we can see you if you can see and hear us.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm back. You hear me? So our Hindia Tahiro, she's reminded us.
Please continue, we can see you, we can hear you.
Are they frozen? They look frozen.
They've said that, no, we can't. They're frozen. No, we can't. Any hope of coming? Okay. Well, let me go to another individual speaker, Mark Johnson. You'll see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You'll have three minutes to address the committee, commission.
Hello, we're wondering if the translator can continue? We lost connection. Can you hear us now?
I can hear you, yes. Is this Janine Aricat?
This is Janine Aricat with the Oromo community. Our translator was interpreting the final comment from the group presentation for the Oromo community. Can we resume?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. One of our Oromo fellow translators, she say, as we live in City Heights area. So you guys, we need to keep, stay together as the City Heights. We don't be disintegrated. We don't be, well, as a community, we have to stay together. We have to grow together. So we're not gonna go apart each others. We have to stay together. And she finalized it. And also, we need neighboring cities, like we shared the borders, all the Spring Valles, La Mesa, El Cajon, Encantos, all areas is supposed to be, we needed. In Chilovista too. So we need to be, stay as the City Heights. We're not gonna be as maply, disintegrated, or maply, shared, or separated. We can, we need to stay together as one community, as one map together each other. Thank you very much for offering me this chance.
Thank you, David Hall and commissioners. I have the Somali community also here with me. They're wondering if they can proceed with their group presentation. I know you have a translator on the Zoom.
Okay, I've gone ahead and unmuted Abdi Aziz Hussein to provide that translation. And you can go ahead and begin with the second group presentation.
Okay, thank you. Please let us know when it's ready.
Abdi Aziz?
Somali. Yes, yes, I'm ready. Can you guys hear me? Yes, and my name is Hussein. Can you hear me? Hello, may I ask?
Hello.
I'm from the city of San Diego. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of minority, immigrant. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. My name is Hussein. I'd like to thank the panel for giving me the opportunity to speak. And we are living in City Heights community. We are Somali refugees. And we would like for our community to be intact and not to be separated into different districts and to be just in one district. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of services, social services. Social services. Immigration. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Paradise Valley. I'm from the city of City Heights. Our community is based in City Heights and the surrounding communities, all the way up to Paradise Valley, El Cajon city. Since our community doesn't speak the language well, we would like all our refugee communities to be into, mapped into one district, so that way we can get all the necessary services in one place and not be disintegrated into different areas and not have to get different services from downtown, from El Cajon city, from southeast, from north. So we would like to be mapped into one district. Our community has large, large families that are struggling with rent. And we would like, we would like to have one voice. Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Salam aleikum Somali. Mona Shago. Salam aleikum. I'm from the city of San Diego.
Aleikum, salam.
I'm from the city of San Diego. 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 I'm from the city of La Mesa, Lemon Grove. I'm from the city of La Mesa.
My name is Mona Shago. I've been living in San Diego for twenty-three years. And I would like for the Somali community that lives in Lemon Grove, City Heights, Paradise Valley, to all have one voice, so we can have one representation.
I'm from the city of San Diego.
Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak.
I'm from the city of Rashid Mursal. I'm from the city of San Diego. I'm from the city of Somali immigrant. Hiya.
Hi, my name is Rashid Umar. My name, my name is Rashid Umar. I'm a Somali immigrant. I live in City Heights.
I'm from the city of San Diego. I'm from the city of San Diego. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo.
Like, like the previous speakers before me, we would like to have one united voice for the Somali community. We don't wanna be, we don't wanna be split up because when we, when we speak with one voice, we will be better represented.
I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo.
Currently, our community is split into different districts, different districts, different districts. And we would like to be grouped into one district, so that way we can receive all our services in one district. He's breaking up. I can't really hear that last part.
Okay.
He was saying, "Ente, ente dambawad."
I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo.
We would like to be in one district where we can, where we can, where we can complain our security issues, cleaning issues, and other services as well.
I'm from the city of San Diego. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. We are feeling voiceless. Please, I'm from the city of Oromo.
We are feeling, we are feeling voiceless. We feel like we are, we are citizens and we would like to be heard and listened to. And I am hoping that you guys will, will consider our presentation and our input. Thank you guys very much.
Salam aleikum.
Aleikum salam.
I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of San Diego.
My name is Rahmo. I live in City Heights.
I'm from the city of San Diego.
I grew up in City Heights.
I'm from the city of San Diego.
I had six of my children in City Heights.
I'm from the city of San Diego.
All six kids go to school in City Heights.
I'm from the city of San Diego.
City Heights is my home. City Heights is where my kids grew up. City Heights is where I call home.
I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo.
And I would, I would like for our community in City Heights to be mapped into, into one, one map in City Heights and not, and not be broken up into, into different districts.
I'm from the city of San Diego. 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 I'm from the city of San Diego.
City Heights is where we have, where all our kids go to school, where we have our stores, our worship houses. And we would like for City Heights to be mapped into just one district. And we, since I participated in the, in the workshop for Pana, the map that we drew, Pana, would like you guys to accept that map and consider it to be, to be the map for, for City Heights and not be split into, into different districts.
I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo.
We would like our community not to be split into, into different districts, so that way we can have a voice that represents our community interest and the refugee interest. So would, would like to be mapped into one district and not be split into, into different districts.
I'm from the city of San Diego.
Thank you guys very much. And, and thank you for, for giving us the time to speak and-
I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo. I'm from the city of Oromo.
As you can see, the signs in the back are all, all, all the kids from the community that, that were born in City Heights. And, and the signs basically read, "We would like to be one, one, would like to be mapped into one district in City Heights and not be split up."
I'm from the city of San Diego.
Again, thank you very much for us the time to speak.
Thank you. That's the end of the group presentation. We really appreciate all your coordination and working with us through this process.
Janine, are you also facilitating the speech of Ali Hori? Janine, are you still there?
I think she may be up.
Okay. Okay, I have an individual-
Did you still need us?
Are you, I have an individual speaker request by the name of Ali Hori. I don't know if that person has spoken. They have your telephone number as well.
Yeah, he wasn't able to make it. It was the principal of the school, but they have their back-to-school night.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Now move to our remaining individual remote speaker who is requested to speak in advance. And that's Mark Johnson. Mark Johnson, you'll see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you very much. Thank you commissioners for taking the time to hear input from all the communities. My name is Mark Johnson. I am with the University Heights Community Association. And University Heights is a historic streetcar suburb of San Diego, located near the central uptown areas. It's bordered on the west by Highway 163, Mission Valley on the north, Texas Street on the east, and Lincoln Street on the south. University Heights enjoys a distinct sense of place developed with loving care and pride of place over many years. Our residents and visitors alike enjoy the intimacy, charm, and walkability of our neighborhood, cafes, restaurants, shops, and markets, which offer lively shopping, dining, and entertainment. We like to look at ourselves as a friendly place for morning coffee, relaxing afternoon strolls. Our community features art, music, theater, special events, as well as jewelers, realtors, and hairstylists, and lots more. Our outstanding schools, parks, and churches are the fabric that knits our community together. As one of the oldest neighborhoods in San Diego, University Heights has played an important part in the city's history for well over a century. Our name resulted from an overly optimistic 1880s plan to build a Southern campus of the University of Southern California. And we still have at least a couple buildings intact to show that that was originally a plan. When the boom went bust, the state Normal School was eventually built elsewhere and that became San Diego State University, and it moved east. University Heights is one of the communities that comprise an area collectively known as uptown. And as such, we should remain grouped together with our neighboring contiguous communities of uptown in the same county supervisory district, Hillcrest, North Park, University Heights, Normal Heights, and Kensington-Talmud. Thank you very much for your consideration and good luck on the task ahead. I'm sure you're gonna have some fun with this.
Thank you. Now, any remaining speakers participating remotely who would like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're, if you're dialing in by phone. I'll begin with Ernie Bond. You'll see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the commission. And if it's agreeable to you, please begin by stating your name for the audio record. You may need to unmute yourself. Ernie, if you're there, you may need to unmute yourself. If you're dialing in at star six, if you're on Zoom, you just need to click unmute.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Ernestine, or Ernestine Ernie Bond, Board Officer for the University Heights Community Development Corporation, which was formed in 1987. The University Heights subdivision was founded in 1888. So we have a long history. And we have emphasized our history more and more to educate people about the early development of San Diego. University Heights became more active as a unified community when we advocated for our neighborhood park. This was a site that was going to be developed with condos. It was our last open space. And as a result, we have the Old Trolley Barn Park, which is an active playground that is welcomed, that welcomes outside interests as well as our residents. Over the past ten years, we've acquired a number of multicultural small businesses. We have a street sign that we were able to get out, to get up, to further emphasize our identity. And also, we have ID monuments that are set at each of our recognized boundaries. And also, we have ID monuments that are set at each of our recognized boundaries. 10 years ago, unfortunately, the redistricting lumbered us with downtown, which actually really has nothing to do with our community of interest. In fact, I felt that downtown should be quarantined. So I do want to emphasize that we would like to stay within our current boundaries and not be subject to being placed in other supervisory districts or city districts. We have made a number of relationships with the city as advocating for us. We have a University Heights parking district. We have a maintenance assessment district. So we are very involved as the CDC with our community. And we also work together with the other local organizations as well. So I trust there...
I'm afraid your time has expired. Do you want to...
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Ellen Nash? You'll hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you for the opportunity again to address the commission's Ellen Nash. I am currently the Chair of the San Diego Chapter of BayPAC, which stands for the Black American Political Association of San Diego. We represent over 800 very diverse members here in San Diego. I am a, obviously, I'm African-American. I'm a descendant of slavery. I came here. My family descendants came here, lost everything, lost their languages as well. So I would like to make that a fact. Secondly, concerned about census and undercounting of people of color, particularly African-Americans as well as immigrants. I participated and led efforts in the census counting, given COVID. And then, of course, the Trump administration, a lot of the uncounted was intentional. And so our voices and our numbers are of grave concern in regards to consideration of drawing lines. Thirdly, I appreciate, I believe I saw some of the former maps that had been drawn. I think back to 2001 if I saw those correctly. I would like to be provided with those maps because after Leon Williams, our only African-American Board of Supervisor, ended his term, then redistricting came along and the African-American community was split up, where the possibility of having a black Board of Supervisor is going to be a long stretch. It can be done, but it's based on coalition building. I hear or heard the concerns of the refugee community. The African-American community shares the same concerns. I hope a coalition building between the African-American and the refugee community can grow. Some of the speakers on the line are actually members of BayPAC. We share the same concerns. Black people are all over the county, from Lemon Grove, La Mesa, all the way out to East County, Oceanside, as well as in central San Diego. So consideration of maps keeping us somewhat together are very important. But from a BayPAC Black American political perspective, also voting blocks are of concern to us as well. So there are several interests that are in place from being raised and born here in San Diego, the educational, cultural complex, parks, churches. We've pretty much been split up. And then the fact that there has been a migration from South San Diego to other parts of the city for safety and cost of living, quality of life reasons, that has also been of a challenge to us. So the Black community wants to be engaged in the process.
You want to wrap up? Your time has expired.
Yes, okay. I just want to say we definitely want to be partnered in the process. I'm convening a Black Leadership Meeting on Redistricting and I would love one of the commissioners to attend that meeting. I did put in a slip just recently, a few minutes ago, for a representative commissioner to be a part of that particular process. Thank you very much for allowing me these extra minutes. Take care.
Thank you. One final call for anybody participating remotely who would like to address the commission. Please raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any further requests to speak, that concludes public comments on the IRC's pre-mapping public hearing this evening.
Well, thank you, David. Thank you commissioners, especially my three colleagues who delivered such a good presentation that it's always good to hear. And most of all, I know it's needless to say, but I'll say it, thanks to the public for participating. This has been a truly inspiring session today. I want to thank each and every speaker for contributing. I want to thank them for taking the time to provide such eloquent, insightful, and important contributions that will help us do our work. I know they may not be with us, but I especially want to thank the interpreters for giving voice to all those who joined us today to ensure that they are heard, especially from languages that I personally know can be really, really challenging to interpret into English. It's all appreciated. And I especially want to thank, and I think I can do this on behalf of the commission, all those children who attended. And I hope in 10 years, some of those children will consider serving on the next redistricting commission. I'd love to see them here. And that's without regard to any singling out of one part of input or one community's input over another. It's all appreciated. And we really, really do appreciate all the different things we heard tonight. The IRC does indeed have a very important responsibility to draw the lines for elections to the Board of Supervisors. And we simply cannot do that without the help we've had tonight. Before we turn back to the remaining business, and we're just wrapping up our public hearing now, and we just had some additional visitors from the public. So maybe we can have you talk to our staff afterwards to make sure we're observing your commitment, or any comments you wish to make. I will ask again anyone who's here in person to drop survey cards in the boxes on the way out. Anyone participating virtually, I do hope you participate in the online survey that's available. Again, our website has a lot of the information that was presented tonight. And our staff will be ready and willing to help you find that whenever needed. All the information is in the presentation you just heard, but on our website as well. We look forward to hearing you from you more at our upcoming meetings and public hearings. The next of those public hearings is on Saturday, September 18th at 1:00 PM at the Green Dragon Tavern and Museum in Carlsbad. The address is 6115 Paseo del Norte. The zip code is 92011, but we will again have virtual capability for those wishing to participate in that way. With that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the public hearing at 6:43 PM. I'm going to assume commissioners could use a break. So, and we'll be able to let our technical colleagues make sure they've got everything running the way they want. So I'll ask commissioners to please be back in attendance at 6:48 when we will move promptly into Commissioner Imman's presentation. Thank you again for participating. Thank you for being here tonight, and we look forward to hearing more. We are in recess until 6:48. Thank you.
Do we have our virtual colleagues up? Very good. Okay. Before we proceed, after I promised Commissioner Inman we would proceed directly to him, another, I keep making these statements that I should know better than to make. We have a challenge, and this is for members of the public as much as for commissioners. We need to be out of this room where we are meeting in person by 8:00 PM. With the considerable number of agenda items before us, I took a little bit of extra time, and I apologize to everyone for taking the extra time, to try to figure out what do we have to do tonight? And what could be postponed, assuming commissioners do not want to meet into tomorrow? With that in mind, my recommendation will be, when we reconvene, to, as expeditiously as possible, go through the demographer update item, led by Commissioner Inman, with the possible approval of the timeline, and then change the agenda to take up Item 10 on Special Voting Rights Act Council Procurement Proposal Process. The reason being that if we don't take action on that this evening, we lose some of the options that I think you're all familiar with from the read-ahead material. Assuming we could get those two items done, I would then ask the commission to consider a special meeting next week to undertake the other items that we still need to hear. The reason I say that is while the rest of the items on the agenda are informational, they are critical to us moving forward on our work. And I'm not sure we could really wait till the 23rd, but I'd be willing to entertain a short discussion tonight on that, as well as another discussion at another time if needed. But I wanted to give you all a heads up about that, because I want you to be, have your calendars at the ready after we get through these two agenda items. Is there any objection to proceeding that way before I formally call us back into session? So we'll do the timeline, special counsel, and then discuss how to have the next meeting. Good? All right. So coming back into session at 7:00 PM, let me turn immediately to Commissioner Inman for a presentation as expeditiously as possible, but without cutting anything short, because this is complex and it's important to do. So we can review the proposed timeline and see if we want to take action on it. Commissioner Inman?
Thank you very much, Chair Bean. So I have a short deck and then a more detailed table. And I think the short deck is useful because it frames everything. So what we did was create a timeline because the IRC will final map and report by December 15th, obviously, as we're trying to do. And look at this as a framework or a draft. When you look at dates, there are some that are pretty well set, others are more fluid. And so as we go through this, I can kind of identify areas where there's latitude fluidity with the dates and others that are more permanent. So next slide, please. To start, there are items that could strain the process. Obviously, we have to finish and file a map and a report on December 15th. Other legal requirements. We have to wait seven days before we can publish our first draft maps after the first, after the release of the official redistricting data. This next one is one that really takes up a large part of the schedule. And that is, we have to have two, at least two draft map public hearings 30 days apart, each meeting having a seven-day notice period with maps. We also have to have sufficient time at the end of the process for the public to review our proposed final map. Now, that isn't a statutory requirement. There's no, there's no requirement in the election code that says we have to do that. But we do want to make sure that public has sufficient time to provide comment throughout this process, and especially at the end of the process when we're proposing a specific final map. Besides these requirements, of course, we want to ensure that we have sufficient time for the IRC and the public to have comment and be involved in the process to develop, review, and submit public maps. And we've got holidays. So next slide, please. So what does this mean for our timeline? Well, the earliest the IRC can post draft maps is September 27th. That assumes statewide database releases their information, their redistricting file on September 20th. But the next thing is basically the 30-day public hearing separation and December 15th filing date, imply a sequence of events that really defines the schedule. So that's the core of what the schedule is built around. So making a December 15th target date means the latest date for a second draft map public hearing is before December 2nd. So if we're working, we're working backwards now. The first draft map public hearing then must be on or before November 1. A November 1 public hearing requires draft maps to be posted by October 25th, seven days prior to November 1. So we'll see all this when we get to the schedule. But that's really a core component of what's driving, driving the overall schedule. And of course, we want to maximize time for public review, and so, as well as IRC work. And so that's really going to be adding special meetings as well as moving around some of our regularly scheduled meetings. So go ahead and go to the next slide. So at a high level, what does this mean? And we'll, we'll look at the detailed table next. But when you look at this, you can see that overall, we have four meetings. In October, we have two in November, and then three meetings in December. Now, there's a lot going on here between these meetings, but that's at a high level, kind of the meetings we have to get to the final goal on December 15th. The first chance that we really have to direct creation of maps is in the October 14 regular meeting that's on there. At that point, we will have heard from flow on all of the public testimony. We will have the voting, the racially polarized voting analysis done. And at that meeting is when we provide first direction. On October 21, those maps are then revised in our October 21 meeting, and they become the focus of our first draft map public hearing, which is on November 1st. And so that gets us set up. And although, when you look kind of at the schedule right now, it's kind of light on meetings in November. As you'll see when we look at the more detailed tables, there's actually a lot going on in terms of incorporating feedback, creating various deliverables, and preparing for these two draft map public hearings that occur. And of course, we've got the Thanksgiving holiday in there, and also my birthday occurs, but I guess that probably isn't as important. The other thing that we can clearly do, though, in November and throughout the schedule, is add special meetings. Special meetings only require one day of advanced notice. And so we do have the flexibility to do that. And this overall schedule, again, is meant to be a framework that gets us to where we need to be on December 15th. You know, as we move through October into November and December, we can start to make decisions as to how we see things proceeding, and we can actually add meetings at that point or change our schedule around as we proceed through this. I also want to note that every meeting starting with the October 14 meeting will involve map development by the IRC. And so the public will actually be able to provide input and review of maps during public comment period in those meetings. In other words, public comment isn't limited to just those two draft map public hearings. Every meeting starting with October 14, public testimony on the specific maps that we're looking at in these meetings can be collected and heard, as well as most of these meetings are going to have what we call live, live interactions with flow by commissioners to, to, to look at implications of various, various draft maps and changing the boundaries in various, in various ways. So that's a high-level overview of the process and kind of the thought process that went into putting this together. Now, we have a very detailed table that shows a lot more granularity and not just the dates. So I can go to that table now unless there's a specific question about kind of the highlight, a general question, I guess, about the deck that I presented. But potentially, in the detailed table, we'll actually get to some of the answers, hopefully, that you may be forming right now. But I'll pause for a moment just to see if there is a question on that presentation at this point.
Commissioner Inman, I'll ask you to just keep ahead and keep going, because I'm, I'm going to ask commissioners to reserve discussion for once we have a motion on the floor, just for the sake of time. So thank you.
Okay. Okay. So if you could bring up the table, please. And it's always good to start at the beginning. So this table includes meeting dates, milestones, intermediate deliverables, such as maps and information that need to be published prior to meetings. Again, it's a framework that really identifies the activities, deliverables, and things that need to happen on our path to hitting the December 15 deadline. So if you start with today, we're here September 9. We're still on schedule, so long as we wrap up by 8 o'clock, I suppose. But if you look at what's going on, you know, September 23rd is when we have a pre-map public hearing. Flow is going to be introducing the DSM, the district scenario modeler at that time, with the statewide database data. And I know Commissioner D has had a question about that. It will have that data in it, because that data will be, is being released on September 20th. Flow is going to immediately load it into the platform. It won't be fully vetted by the time we hit September 23rd, but we will have the data in there for the demonstration. And it will be fully vetted by Monday. If you could go down a little bit further, the Monday, the 27th, I think, is when we anticipate to launch. That's fine. Thank you. By Monday, where did my Monday go? 27th, right there in the middle of the page. Thanks. The DSM for public use. And so at that point, the public will be able to interact with the district scenario model, and we will have had the training. At that point, we could potentially be releasing draft maps, but we will not be ready to do so at that point. The next regular, or the next meeting is a special meeting that's on the schedule September 30th. Now, that one wasn't on the PowerPoint presentation, and that's because this is still subject to additional, additional discussions. And kind of one of the, one of the points is the next agenda item that we're going to get into. But we did pencil it in. And depending on, on how things progress with special counsel and such, we, we may or may not have that meeting. I'm not sure. But by then, the racially polarized voting study should be complete. That's still the target date for that. And then as you go down, you'll see that we do get into a cadence where, you know, we're providing, Flow is providing materials for a meeting. In this case, on Monday, we post an agenda several days later based on those meetings. And then we go in on October 7th. We're getting a summary from flow about all the public comment testimony, communities of interest that have been provided. And this is when we will see the first set of springboard maps. And again, those springboard maps are going to incorporate public testimony. We won't have the racially polarized voting analysis at this point to influence those, because we, we haven't gotten the formal presentation of it, but that will be coming. So this is when we see our first set of springboard maps. And now if you could go on down in the schedule, please. The next page. On Thursday, October 14th, now, we get to that first meeting where we'll hear about the the racially polarized voting analysis, the voting rights analysis from, from council about the RPV study. We will have already had all the public testimony integrated into the district scenario model in the terms of springboards. And in this meeting, we can start to provide feedback to flow for development of our first set of draft maps in that October 14 meeting. Out of that, flow does their work. And on Monday, October 18th, they're, they're getting back the results of their analysis in the form of those first draft maps along with tables and information. We post an agenda on Wednesday, and then we have an IRC special meeting on October 21. And that's where we will see the first set of actual draft maps being presented by flow. And again, we will then provide instruction back to flow on those draft maps. They will take that instruction, go back to work, and then you'll see, we get back into this sequence where flow then updates draft maps, they get integrated into an agenda. And now we're leading up to our first draft map public hearing, which is on November 1. Now, we have to post the maps for that meeting seven days in advance, as I said earlier. So that's why on Monday, October 25th, we have the posting of the agenda and the maps for that first draft map public hearing. That meeting on November 1, I expect, we pretty much like the meeting today, it'll be a regular meeting that will have a specific time for the start of the public hearing component. The public hearing will proceed. And then, once that's complete, we'll go back into regular meeting. So again, in this meeting, we will have the chance to direct flow in what to do next with those draft maps. This is envisioned as a live interaction with flow. They'll have their tool up and running. Commissioners can ask for certain changes or what-ifs, And at this point, you know, again, we have multiple versions of draft maps that we're considering. Uh you know, and and just working towards refining those. And now we get uh get on down where flow is going to take that feedback, um create another set of draft maps. Uh we'll get them included in an agenda for uh our November twelfth meeting. Uh we move this one. It's as you as you see from Thursday to Friday. And again, in this, uh we'll have live scenario modeling. We'll have flow uh presenting the draft maps, the IRC. Uh again, it's going to be able to instruct flow uh in in uh in live scenario modeling. Public input, of course, can be collected in this because this is an agenda item that we're looking at, and the public can comment on it. And then uh we have uh the next activity is on November twenty second, when flow then is uh has gone and and uh taken all the input that we had and created um the next iteration on our draft maps that will form uh what we're going to use for our second uh draft map public hearing. So if you want to go ahead and go down to the next page, please. Third page. You know, we are uh um then leading up to our meeting on December second, which is our second draft map public hearing, and this is where we do have a gap. Uh we have that wonderful week in November where we don't have any meetings. Of course, Thanksgiving occurs in there, but prior to Thanksgiving week, there is a week where we don't have a meeting schedule. We can easily add um a special meeting in that week. But I would say, you know, it's better if we wait until sometime in October, maybe even early November, once we see how uh things are progressing, whether we want to add a meeting eh eh during that week or if we want to change around our existing schedule. But we do believe with this framework, there is a reason to think we can get to the December uh fifteenth deadline. So again, second draft map public hearing on Thursday, December second. Uh we can uh we will uh again provide direction back to flow. Uh flow will then work on uh updating the draft maps, and hopefully, we're getting down to only a few draft maps at this point uh for consideration. And then on Thursday, December nine, is on this schedule where we're looking to actually adopt uh a draft map um uh to be the one that we would consider our final map. There's no necessary uh set in stone reason we have to do it in this meeting. But just um just so we have sufficient time so the public can review it before uh we uh we post on uh on uh December fifteen. Um we're we're proposing to um at this point, try to get it down to one map for adoption on the ninth. What has to happen once we've decided on a map is we have to uh finalize the report that will be published. So we can't finalize that report, of course, until we have that draft map that we want to finalize the report around. So there will be work that has to be done after a draft map is adopted for uh for our final map. Um this gives sufficient time to finalize that report. Um again, uh this calls for a special meeting on the fourteenth then to approve that report. We have already approved, uh if we did it in December ninth, we already have a map. Now we're just approving the final report, and of course, then on the fifteenth, uh we uh we would file uh the map and the report. One thing I failed to uh to mention about this report is we do look to uh to forming or starting to write this report early on, actually uh discussing in potentially the September twenty third meeting, a process that we want to put in place for defining what that final report will look like, as well as a process to begin collecting the information that will go in that final report. And one of the options that we think uh should be considered is forming an ad hoc uh committee uh to uh to take on that task. And with that, I'll stop. Um and there were many people that were involved in this, obviously, uh staff, Nicole, Barbara Liberty, as well as Council Margery. And so um I guess I I would like, if any of them want to uh make a comment or 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 weigh in, uh I think that would be appropriate, and then uh I will pause and uh see what questions there are. Thank you very much, Chair Bane.
Unless, thank you very much. Um unless there's anything pressing uh from some of the folks who had input to this, let me thank them all on behalf of the entire commission. This really reflected a lot of work. I don't know that even I'm aware of all of it. Um but it's an it's an impressive product, not least because it provides a really good way to solicit and receive as much public input as possible in the timeline we have. And I'll note Commissioner Inman's comments that this timeline will indeed still be subject to potential change if we find a need to add a meeting or reschedule things, but it at least points a way ahead, which is something this commission has done before. With that in mind, what I'd like to do is ask for public comment, then take a motion, then move to a discussion, noting again that we have about forty minutes left, and we really do need to also take up the special counsel item tonight. So unless there's objection, I'm going to ask David if there's any request from the public to speak on this agenda item.
Thank you, Chair Bane. If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, we would welcome your comments. Those present who wish to address the commission, please come forward to the microphone. And if you're participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any movement in the chamber, not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bane.
Very good. Commissioner Inman, before I ask for a motion, let me make absolutely sure I understand right what we should be pursuing, which is the draft redistricting timeline document, the three-page detailed document. Is that what the commission should run on? Very good. So I'll be asking for a motion, as this is an action item, to approve the three-page document in today's agenda materials entitled Draft Redistricting Timeline Independent Redistricting Commission, September to December twenty twenty one, Draft oh nine oh nine two one. Do I have a motion? Okay, so uh we'll take Co-Vice Chair Garcia and Commissioner Larson as the second discussion. Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bane. Um my only concern is on page two. Which says our our regular IRC meeting was rescheduled due to the Veterans Day holiday, and it's scheduled for Friday. Fridays don't seem to be an ideal day to have meetings, just generally, and we've had consistently had our meetings you know, either Wednesdays or Thursdays, so I'm not sure if that's going to present a problem to the public.
I would assume part of the challenge for that is because it's a regular meeting, and we are therefore under the seventy-two-hour notice requirement that if we moved it back to Wednesday, the tenth, um the agenda would need to be posted presumably Friday, right? And um Friday the fifth, which is a possibility, but if flow is submitting materials on Friday the fifth, and that needs to be reviewed before we can be posted, we're we're looking at a bit of a crunch then. I take the point, and I think it's something we could look at a little later, but my suggestion would be right now for purely procedural reasons to leave it as is with the promise that we can revisit it if needed. Commissioner Inman or anyone who's worked on this more closely, any comments on that?
You know, this gives us a framework, and I think on the twenty-third, we're actually taking up the issue of rescheduling regular meetings.
Could you repeat that? It's it's a little hard to hear you. Sorry.
That that proposal was fine. Uh I do think that it's the twenty-third when we're actually going to take up the issue of rescheduling regular meetings. So this is a draft, but it's not saying that we will in fact reschedule that meeting at this point.
Right. So we can, we we're not formally approving the changes to the regular meeting schedule at this point. Good point. So we can definitely address it on the twenty-third. Commissioner Larson.
Uh I think this is a very masterful template. Really, a lot of thought seems to be put in this. I would uh just recommend it to be approved, but also understanding that uh it's all subject to change. But uh we do really do have a map here of of our paths to the end. I I think that's great.
Thank you for that. Other comments? Commissioner Serbin?
Thank you, Chair Bane. So I see that the first draft map public hearing is uh scheduled, proposed, supposed to be scheduled on November first. Um is there a reason why we aren't holding that on the week of the of October twenty fourth?
Uh the, no, just the way that we laid out the schedule and the timing of things on October twenty fourth, uh it might be a little bit premature because of the other inputs that we need. Let me just go back October, because we have to have a seven-day noticing period for that first draft map public hearing. So if we're doing it on October twenty fourth, we have to go back to twenty-four minus seven, October.
I'm saying we can, the week of the, so it could be on the twenty-eighth, perhaps.
Potentially Thursday, October twenty eighth. Yeah, 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 we could consider that.
Okay, so that's a possibility then, Ken?
Um I, you know, I see no reason why it wouldn't be a possibility. You know, again, I would say, you know, as we uh collect comment and we work through this process, if we can accelerate some of these things, you know, I would not be opposed to that at all. The sooner we can get mapping going, the better.
Okay, so my second question is on December ninth, the eh the bullets reads IRC passes resolution adopting final map. Is that a proposed final? Because we're we're giving the public around seven days, I guess, until December fifteenth to comment on that. Is that is that what we're doing?
Uh yes, potentially, they can provide comment. And I would say, you know, during that period, if significant issues arise, because there is a period in there, we could potentially have a special meeting, an emergency meeting, if you will, um prior to uh the fifteenth.
Okay, because I guess that's that's kind of what I'm wondering is, you know, there's there is that seven-day period for the for the public to review this proposed final, but it's there, you know, for that for that review period to have any meaning, then it would seem that we would should have a meeting to.
I don't know that we need to have a meeting. They can submit me comments, um you know, they can uh send us messages and such if if uh if something arises. I don't, we could schedule a special meeting. Yes, I I would agree with that statement. I don't think it's a necessity.
Okay. So we would receive comment on the proposed final, and then we, how would we consider that comment?
Well, then, if it was if it was significant, we would have to call the special meeting.
Okay, so I guess at that time, some, at some, there'd be a process by which we decide whether those comments are significant enough to hold a special meeting?
Yeah, I mean, eh that's uh, you know, there's a lot of things that can happen, you know, especially when we hit December and people all of a sudden pay attention. I, you know, hypotheticals and such, at this point, I can't, you know, I can lay out a framework, but I can't necessarily anticipate all of them, so.
May I, uh Chair, may I just
Please.
A- a- as a reminder, um as we're going through this schedule, I know there was a lot of work done by everyone trying to plot out the dates. I just want to remind that while we need seven days to post, we need the additional uh time before to prep everything for the posting. Um so I just want to uh remind everyone as that as we're looking at potentially moving dates around. Thank you.
My anticipation is round about mid-November, we're going to need to do a reassessment based on where we are, what we're hearing from the public, and the multiple reasons that there may be a need to add a meeting or two, uh and not just for some of the things we discussed tonight. Um that's complicated, but the good news is, as we just said, as Commissioner Inman pointed out, we're going to have to take this up again on the twenty-third anyway for the formal scheduling of the regular meetings. And I think we might be well-served by uh having some more research done, especially by staff and council, on what those requirements will be and what flexibility we we need to preserve for that. But I do agree, the period from mid-November roughly to mid-December is is going to be tight. Uh and we need to do all we can to both accommodate public input while doing all we can to meet whatever deadlines we do face in whatever way we see best to meet them. So I I I think that we'll have more to come on that. Mr. Potts?
Oh, yes. Uh great work uh by the team. My only uh comment would be if we could decouple the November first meeting with the first draft map public hearing from a regular meeting, because those seem to get sort of congested, and couple that with a special meeting similar to what we did on the second of December. I would really want to focus on the map drawing process and move regular meeting agenda items to regular meetings. Uh because if we don't, we would get bogged down, and we won't focus on the meat of what we must do, and that's reviewing the mapping process and getting it done while listening to the public's testimonies and their contributions. So um again, great work. Just consider decoupling the November first public hearing meeting with a regular meeting and make it similar to the December second meeting, where it's coupled with a special meeting.
If I could, just quickly, uh the December second is actually a regular meeting and a special meeting. Um I believe it's going to be a regular meeting, but decoupling, um one comment about this is we can take public testimony on the maps and then just and then go into our regular meeting where we're drawing the maps. I see that as a win-win, because not only have we heard the testimony, but we can then immediately incorporate it into drawing maps. If you separate those two meetings, then one day you're hearing testimony. Three days later, you get to start drawing the maps. And so I saw it as an advantage to actually have hearings coupled with a regular meeting where you're actually drawing the maps. And and so that 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 would be my reason to keep them together.
And my suggestion to address Commissioner Pons' concern is that it be kept to a very limited agenda. But having the regular meeting allows you to work on the maps right after the public hearing. And we'll just, I take this comment as keep it to a map-drawing agenda.
And that's fine. I just don't want my excitement and enthusiasm to wane in the late hours of such meetings, and we sort of put three things together. And I really just want to be really, really focused and lasered in on the process and not administrative issues.
Yeah, point taken. Point taken. I agree.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I saw your hand up before, but I'm assuming that was just covering it?
Yeah, um actually, uh Ramis has asked the question that I was going to ask, and um I I have no further comments or questions. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel?
Yeah, Vice Chair Garcia, if I may ask, is that with regard to the October twenty eight, moving the November first meeting? To the
No, no, no. I I had a question about the um about the uh the decision to post to sort of adopt a map on December ninth and have that um recommended uh week for public review and and can just explain what why we might want to do that and how we might call a special meeting to respond to those public comments.
Yeah.
So that was
In that regard, I wanted to point out that the this draft map, and I totally agree that the second half of this map may evolve, but the, on this timeline, the commission selects a preferred map on the second of December. And that preferred map is likely going to be the adopted map or adopted map with minor changes. And then the seven-day review period occurs, and actual adoption occurs on the ninth. Now, it doesn't have to occur on the ninth. It has to occur before the fifteenth. Um but right now, on this, it's scheduled for the ninth, so there's time for the commission to complete and review its report. It has two things to file, the map and the report. But that doesn't mean if something significant comes up between the second and the ninth that you can't schedule But that doesn't mean if something significant comes up between the 2nd and the 9th, that you can't schedule a ma- a meeting on the 10th or the 11th to change the map.
Thank you. And, and I just want to echo, um, um, or support what Commissioner Pons just said. I think, um, as an officer, um, I will work with, um, the Chair and the other, um, co-co-Vice Chair. To make sure that, that those meetings, those two meetings that were the public hearings, that we have nothing on the agenda, um, to the extent possible, except, um, map drawing. So I think that was a great point.
And I did want to make one other point about moving the November 1 meeting to the 28th. And Commissioner Inman hit the nail on the head. The reason that's difficult is because of the seven day notice requirement. And if you move back on this calendar, that seven days is the 21st. And the IRC just saw drop draft maps for the first time on the 21st. So it will not have had any opportunity to work on them. And so as Commissioner Inman pointed out, so much of this is driven by the statutory notice requirements. And it pushes our meetings in different directions.
Very good. Thanks for that exchange. Um, I'd like to move to a vote very soon. Any closing comments or thoughts? Good. So the motion is to approve the draft redistricting timeline, the three-page document that we referred to earlier. David, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Katrina, Katerina?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Chair Bame, that motion passes with all Commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you Commissioners, and again, thank you Commissioner Inman and the entire team that put this together. As Commissioner Larson stated so eloquently, it, it's really, eh, something to see. It gives us plenty to work with and I'm optimistic that on the 23rd, we'll be able to consider more of the details and get the scheduling right. All right, so the next step I'd like to pursue tonight is a motion to table all items on our agenda for tonight, except item 10. We will take up the additional items either in a special meeting next week. Or on September 23rd at a regular meeting, or in some other way. And yes, that means I'm going to ask the co-Vice Chair's staff and counsel to work with us to find the best way to put that package together. Before I ask for that motion, let me check with both co-Vice Chairs and particularly co-Vice Chair Katerina, because. There is a lot of work that was done on the outreach, preparation, the materials, the plan ahead. Are we okay deferring that for tonight?
Um, it, it's up to the commission. Um, I think if we are going to defer it tonight, everybody be, needs to be prepared to vote. Eh, hopefully at a special meeting, because I don't know that we can really afford to push it off too far from there. But that would be my recommendation, and I'm going to recommend to ADASD that they finish their draft outreach plan. Um, and submit it, uh, for whatever, if we're having a special meeting or however, we're going to continue that. Um, and I think that that would be the most, um, efficient, um, proposal.
Very good, and I'm getting nods from Rowanah on ADASD that that will be workable and doable. Um, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, any comment? Okay, so let me ask for a motion to table all items on our agenda for tonight, as I described, except for agenda item 10. Commissioner Chen, second. Commissioner Hanson, thank you. Any dis- oh, I should ask for, I, I don't need to ask for public comment because it's extra, but I'll do it anyway.
Uh, if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, we'd welcome your comment. Those present who would like to address the commission, please come forward with the microphone. If you're participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand. We do have a public speaker.
Special meetings and especially the meeting where you're doing the first, second, third, or however many drafts you're going to do of the mapping. Because that's going to be the most important part and, um, what the plan is to actually get people in the seats.
Thank you. Not seeing any virtual, uh, hands at this point, not seeing any further mov- movement in the chamber. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Um, in order to clarify things for the Commissioners, I will, again, want to remind that we will post all our meetings. In, uh, accordance with the requirements, 24 hours ahead for a special meeting, 72 hours ahead for a regular meeting. And we will, of course, get that information out so the public can comment as well as quickly as possible. With that, any discussion? Seeing then, David, could you please call a roll for the vote on the motion to table all agenda items except item 10?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal? Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen? Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with all Commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you Commissioners for your indulgence on that. Thank you Members of the public for understanding the challenges we face. It's not something I do lightly, and I promise we will just redouble our commitment to make sure the public knows what we're doing, when we're doing it. And have all the chances possible to participate in the discussions and contribute. So thank you for all that. We turn to item 10. Discussion and possible approval of Special Voting Rights Act Council procurement proposal and process, including possible formation of an ad hoc committee. I will note that today's agenda material included information on all this, including potential paths forwards for the retain- forward. For the retention of Special Voting Rights Act Council, the cre- possible creation of an ad hoc committee and a request for qualifications. That lays out the procurement process. Any references to the ad hoc committee or other decisions that are in fact, decisions for the commission to make are only included for planning purposes. This is not designed in any way to prejudge the process or the commission's will. It just seemed the best way to proceed in order to make sure the committee was, the commission was aware of the options. I think most commi- eh, the Commissioners will know most of this from the material provided ahead of time. So with that, I think it'll be easiest to turn to, um, staff and Barbara to make a presentation on this. Uh, then we'll have public comment, uh, then again, we'll, in our expedited way, we'll move towards a motion. Uh, and discussion under that motion. But I promise to allow Commissioners a chance, uh, to reflect on what that motion should look like. And make sure we're pursuing an option that the commission wants to pursue. With that, Barbara, please.
Thank you, Chair Bame. I'm pleased to provide a brief update. At the August 18th, 2021 Independent Redistricting Commission meeting, the IRC approved retention of Special Voting Rights Act, VRA Council. To perform legal services as set forth in the draft statement of work presented to the commission at that time. If we can go to the next slide. As described, the required legal services for Special VRA Council will provide legal support to the commission, staff and consultants. Review of documents, including proposed and final district maps. Use and analysis of RPV data developed by the commission's demographic consultant subcontractor to advise the commission regarding compliance with the federal VRA. Review and presentation of legal memorandum related to applicable legal issues and advice to the commission, commission staff and consultants. As requested by the IRC, this report today summarizes three possible options for the IRC to retain VRA Council in the identified timeframe. They're presented on this slide. The table also, there we go, thank you. The table also shows the feasibility, strengths, challenges, contract execution date and cost of each option. And these are all, um, laid out in quite a bit of detail in the staff report that was provided. Option one would authorize, uh, Nelson Merkison, IRC's existing general counsel, to subcontract Special VRA Council services on behalf of the IRC. As described in the statement of work and detailed in the procurement proposal. Under option one, Nelson Merkison would be responsible for the procurement process. And would bring forward two recommendations for the selection of Special VRA Council to the full IRC. Staff would then work administratively with county council, who executed the existing contract to amend the current general council contract. And add Special VRA Council services to be provided through a subcontractor. And we'll go to option two, that would authorize Nelson Merkison to subcontract Special VRA Council services on behalf of the IRC. As described in the statement of work and detailed in the procurement proposal. And under option two, Nelson would be responsible for the procurement process and the IRC ad hoc committee would be formed. With a purpose to develop a recommendation to the IRC for, uh, selection of a Special VRA Council. And staff would have worked administratively with county council to amend the current general council contract. And add Special VRA Council services to be provided through a subcontractor. And then lastly, option three would authorize Nelson Merkison to provide Special VRA Council services directly as described in the statement of work. And staff would work with county council to augment the current general council contract and add Special VRA Council services, uh, to a contract amendment. Subject to your questions, this concludes my update, Chair Bame.
Before we proceed further, let me ask if we can put the slide back up that was just up with the options. That Ms. Minas was addressing. The reason is that the Commissioners, you will have received an updated, um, report with the options. Being laid out in accordance with the slide that we had, but we can get that. Okay, okay, so we have a technical issue with that, but I just want to make sure, um, Barbara, can you lay out the options in shorthand? So that we're all on the same page.
Absolutely. So option one is the, um, because we have both the strengths and the challenges. This would authorize Nelson Merkison's, which is our existing general counsel, to subcontract Special VRA Council services on behalf of the IRC. As described in the statement of work and detailed in the procurement proposal. Nelson Merkison would be responsible for the procurement process and would bring forward two recommendations for the selection of Special VRA Council to the full IRC. Staff would then work administratively with county council, who executed the existing contract to amend the current general council contract. And add the VRA Council services to be provided through subcontractor. Did you want me to continue or can everyone see that?
No, I think we've got it now. So, option one is the subcontractor option. Option two is the subcontractor and ad hoc committee option. And option three is the no subcontractor option. Now again, these are built off of the previous decision and previous, uh, discussions we had. I'm open to proceeding however the commission would like, if asked, for the sake of, I'm sorry, Commissioner Serbin?
Eh, should we have a motion to start the, the discussion? Should we have a motion to start the discussion?
That's just what I was going to ask. What, 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 if Commissioners, if a Commissioner's ready to make a motion, I'm happy to entertain it.
I would move to proceed under option two.
Okay.
May want to, eh, check for public comment on the item?
I'm, I just want to make sure we have that teed up before turning public comment, but thank you, David. We appreciate that. Okay, so the motion will be, for now, because it's been moved, uh, to adopt option two.
Second.
And that, and that would also include with it approval of the procurement proposal or the RFQ. That's included in the agenda materials. Okay, uh, before I take that as a motion in a second, let me ask David if there's any requests from the public to comment on this agenda.
If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, we would welcome your comments. Those present who wish to address the commission, please come forward with a microphone. And if you're participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Bloom, on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if you are dialing in by phone. Not seeing any movement in the, uh, chamber and not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on the Senate, Chair Bame.
Okay, very good. So the motion that will be coming, if I, if Commissioner Serbin will ask you to be the motioner, but I want to make sure we have it right. Would be first to approve the procurement proposal, also known as the RFQ, that's including today's agenda materials. And second, to approve option two. And we can talk about the details of that, including identifying the ad hoc committee members based on the volunteers we had before. Commissioner Serbin, is that your motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Chen, you're willing to second that?
Okay.
Very good. Uh, discussion? Commissioner Diaz?
Um, apologies if this was, uh, covered in the previous meeting, but I just wanted to understand, um, the procurement process under option two. And it says here that, um, with the ad hoc committee. I'm, I'm just reading, in the special meeting, IRC discusses NMS recommendation for Special VRA Council. Branks the recommended candidates, authorizes contract negotiation break order. Um, what is, just to kind of understand that, what that process, how that process is different from, um, what? It's a option one, for example. I guess maybe I was trying, trying to figure out the differences between the two options in this case.
The, the fundamental difference, uh, between option one and option two on the screen is the role of the ad hoc commission. Um, and in particular, it, eh, the ad hoc committee. In particular, it gives Commissioners a direct role in the interviewing process.
Okay.
That's perhaps the key. There, there are some other nuances, but that I think is the key difference.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for reading that out. Um, I have Commissioner, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, Commissioner Russ, Commissioner Larson. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
I don't know where to begin. I, I guess my, my concern about, uh, I, I understand that there, um, is a desire, uh, for, uh, on the part of some Commissioners. To have an ad hoc committee of Commissioners who would be involved in the interview process. Um, my concern is that, um, to add that component of three or four Commissioners. Um, into the process at this stage, when we're so constrained by time. Um, and trying to, you know, coordinate all of those calendars and all of that availability. Um, with, uh, candidates is, um. To put it bluntly, kind of asking for trouble. Um, I, I prefer the option that has our general counsel, who are experts in this area. Um, do this work for us. This is what we've hired them to do. Um, this is a staff job, as far as I'm concerned, and they bring to us the candidates and, and we approve them. It's not as if we're not, we don't, you know, have a role. So, um, to me, this is, um. Given, again, the time constraints, would not be my preferred option.
Thank you for that. Um, Commissioner Russ and Commissioner Larson, then Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Russ?
Yeah, I too have a, have a concern about the time constraints. Uh, we're looking at option three will, uh, would give us, um, uh, two and a half weeks ahead of the other options. We already know, um, our current general counsel, we have, uh, I, I think we have, uh. Faith in their capabilities. I, I'm not sure, and, and, and as with, um, what Commissioner Garcia said, I'm very concerned with the time constraints. Putting another layer of, of ad hoc committee members. Um, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Garcia was leaning more toward option one, uh, but I, I would certainly be leaning more toward option three.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Yeah, would you please? I, I appreciate it.
So I, I am leaning towards option one, and I'll tell you why. Um, our general counsel have advised us that we need independent special counsel. And I don't think option three, which would just have, um, general counsel. And I don't think option three, which would just have general counsel expanding their role and them providing this special VRA analysis, comports with their advice. So I have confidence in the firm, and I think they're experts in this, but David advises that we need independent special counsel.
The only thing, the only thing is that the difference between option one and option two, it doesn't really save us much time. If your main constraint was the, another, what, two and a half weeks, two and a half weeks of delay, which is my concern, I don't think, you know, there's much difference in the timeline with option one and two. That's why I would still go with option three. But you noted, noted, thank you, thank you, Rosette.
No, it's a useful discussion, bringing things out that need to be considered. I have Commissioner Larson, then Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Larson.
Considering the three options offered and the timeline, I have to agree with Commissioner Russ. I think option three is the only viable one.
Thank you. Commissioner Serbin.
So I appreciate the concerns about the timeline. I think, though, that if we're not actively involved upfront and we just, and we allow, if we're going to do like, say, option one, and we allow our current counsel to play the only role up until they bring the final proposed candidate or review for our final approval, if that were to happen and we are not happy with that final proposed candidate, we're just at the very beginning of the process again. And I wouldn't, I would hate to be, like, lose two or three weeks going through this process. Nielsen Merkheimer comes to us, says, hey, here's who we recommend. And what if we don't like that person? Then we've lost three weeks. So that's why I don't like option one. Option three, this is supposed to be independent counsel. Counsel cannot be independent if they've been hired by our general counsel and only through that process.
Not being hired by them, we're hiring.
Let me call Commissioner Chen, then Commissioner Pons. Commissioner Brown, did you want to?
No, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Okay, so Commissioner Chen, then Commissioner Pons.
So I understand that the independence is critical to me. Option two is the only one that gives us any semblance of independence, and that's why I would vote for option two.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pons.
Thanks. I agree with all the comments made. I think the independence of the council will remain, but I think two meetings ago, we agreed on the duties and roles and responsibilities that we expected from the VRA council. And because we agreed on that, whatever they bring us would have to be, would have to meet that litmus test on what we agreed to. Now, if we don't agree to what we agreed to two meetings ago, we need to go back and revisit that. But I think it was pretty clear on the expectations of the independent council for the VRA process. And so I am in agreement that I think option three is the best of the three options, although they all are valuable.
Other discussion? Commissioner Diaz.
I think option three is not the right way to go. And the reason for it being is that, again, the main challenge is it limits the opportunity to receive an opinion from a separate qualified independent council. Bottom line, how clearer can we be? And also the fact that this general council was also involved in the 2011 redistricting process, so keep that in mind as well. So we want to make sure that we are truly independent. Even having the public view us as a truly independent commission is of our utmost importance here. And so if we do have the time and the volunteers to assemble this ad hoc committee, I would say option two is our best bet right now. And I think the timeline, yes, the crunch, we're already under a crunch timeline to begin with, but if there's a will, there's a way. And we've got, if we have that interest of putting that ad hoc committee together, I think we do it. Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners, especially those who haven't spoken yet? Okay. We do have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown, please.
Yeah, I was just remembering back when we were doing the special, my brain is on Friday, I think, right now, when we had our own committee doing selections of the outreach and the map drawers. And we had to go, we didn't, we had to redo it. We had to start over after two or three weeks of trying to get people to solicit, because we didn't have enough people responding or something. So I don't know, if we run into that problem, we're not going to have any time to get to that point. And I would say that, that as long as the party is independent from our current council, and it's just recommended by the council, who we rely upon heavily as it is, let's go with that. So that would be option one I would support.
I do want to get some clarification. Am I correct in reading option one, and this is directed to staff or council, that under option one, there would be at least two candidates presented to the commission?
That is correct, Chair.
Okay. And then I did want to note that we had a previous expression of interest and willingness to serve on an ad hoc committee, which would be option two, from Commissioners Hanson, Larson, and Serbin. Now, it's one thing to offer that, it's another thing to look at this timeline and realize what kind of work that ad hoc committee would be considering. And I did want to at least let them weigh in on whether, given those dates, particularly since that's the week that data is being released, so there's plenty for commissioners to do. But I just wanted to make sure all three of those commissioners were still interested and willing and able to meet those responsibilities, because it's literally day by day to fulfill those requirements. Commissioner Hanson gave me a thumbs up. Did you want to say something? Okay, just please.
No. I'm aware of the crunch and everything, but I agree with those who say that this is an opportunity for us to ensure our independence. And remember that this special council is being added in order to protect us against some legal challenges to our mapping decisions. And I think the fact that the legal council that we have now has been involved in this just whole process since before we were even meeting, that we need to go beyond their recommendations and have some more active participation from our council or commissioners.
I'd be willing to also be on the ad hoc committee, even though I don't feel option two is the best choice.
Thank you. Commissioner Serbin.
I think Commissioner Larson is one of the best choices for the record, so it's hard to follow his act, but I would also be willing to serve on the committee as well.
I have Co-Vice Chair Garcia, did I see your hand up? And Commissioner Brown?
I think even with the first choice, it's still our choice overall. They're only going to make recommendations to us, and it's up to us whether it's somebody that meets our needs or not. So they don't make the ultimate decision on who's going to be representing us.
Chair Bane.
Please.
Well, is it possible to put another motion on the floor?
On option one versus option two? Sorry. Thank you very much. I wanted to check to see if we should amend the motion to make it option one or option two, because I'm not hearing a great deal of support for option three. If that's a friendly and smooth amendment to the motion, I'll ask the motioner and the seconder to consider it.
Chair Bane, I disagree.
Commissioner Russ, it's okay.
I disagree. I heard, I heard a number of supports for three, sir.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is a yes or no on option two. I'm, Commissioner Diaz.
Just repeat the option, again, the option two that we're voting on.
Sure. Option two is the subcontractor with ad hoc committee option.
Okay.
And that package that was previously sent is the one that was corrected later. So if you go off the chart, and I apologize for that, yeah. No, it's good, and it's good to correct for the public, too. So if you work off the chart in blue, it's option two. Nielsen Merkheimer subcontractor and AHC.
And Chair, would it be helpful to note that option two would require a special meeting and requires the ad hoc committee to complete the entire process within eight days, including the weekend?
That's why I was highlighting the timeline as laid out, but I do think we have a willingness to serve from that, which was a precondition, I think, for the option. So I'm going to call a vote in a moment on that motion unless there are any other comments to be made. Okay. So this is a motion that's in two parts, to approve the procurement proposal, also known as the RFQ, as included in the agenda materials, and to approve option two, the subcontract with ad hoc committee. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bane. Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Pons?
Nay.
Commissioner Garcia?
Nay.
Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Brown?
Nay.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Aye, yes.
Chair Bane?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
With Commissioners Garcia, Brown, Larson, and Russ voting no, all other commissioners being who are present voting aye, the motion fails to achieve the required number of affirmative votes.
Commissioner Pons voted nay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Pons voted nay. The motion fails to achieve the required number of affirmative votes.
Okay. So thank you, though, for the discussion. I really would prefer to have this decided today, so I will shift with permission to option one, since I seem to hear that as the next largest vote, so though I be willing to consider option one or option three?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, so we'll make it, we'll make it, a vote for option one or a vote for option three. And that way, we cover it and we're being fair to all commissioners, okay? So the motion will be to adopt, first, to approve the procurement proposal, also known as the RFQ, and second, to vote either for option one or option three. So when you vote, please vote yea or, I'm getting stares that...
Yeah, that process really disadvantages option two, clearly.
Yes, it does.
If we had done option one first and voted it down, then we'd say, so whichever one went first and got voted down would be disadvantaged, this process. So it doesn't seem like a fair process.
Okay, I suppose I'm missing something. Okay, let me just take a motion from the floor then. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, what is the motion you were making?
Yes, I would like to move that we approve option one for, to approve the RFQ and for Nielsen Merkheimer to bring us two candidates to approve for special counsel.
Okay. Have a second on that?
Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Brown, thank you. Good. All right. Discussion. Good. I appreciate that. With that, we'll move to, again, a motion to approve option one, along with the procurement proposal, also known as the RFQ. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bane. Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Oh my God. I begrudge you.
Commissioner Chen?
Nay.
Commissioner Russ?
Nay.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Nay.
Commissioner Inman?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Chair Bane?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Nay.
Commissioner Dostal? With Commissioners Diaz, Katerina, Inman, Garcia, Brown, and Chair Bane voting aye, all the commissioners who are present voting no, the motion fails to achieve the required number of affirmative votes.
Very good. I would be happy to entertain a motion for option three.
David, maybe a better way, instead of voting all three motions down, can we make a motion that we will accept the majority of the three? If we all vote for option one, two, or three, and whichever one wins the majority?
In a word, no, because of the bylaws. The bylaws require nine votes for an affirmative action.
Well, so that's why we phrase it that the affirmative action is that we accept the majority of the three, that would be the motion.
What we would need for that is another motion that would have sufficient commissioners voting for it. In other words, the bylaws do not allow motion to be passed.
Got it. Okay, how about this then? How about we do a straw vote of the three, and then whichever one wins, we all vote for.
No. Sorry. That doesn't make, you can't do that.
Okay. Let me ask, let me ask Marguerite.
I wanted to mention, I wanted to mention, it's not only the bylaws, it's the elections code that says there has to be nine votes for action by the commission. It's in state law.
Can I, can I just say that when we, you know, when we talk about independence of the commission, we're talking about independence in drawing maps, and we do it without intervention from the county board of supervisors. It doesn't really have anything to do with whether or not we're involved in the interview process for special counsel. What we need is independent special counsel that are not part of our general counsel. So let's not get confused about what independence means. Option one and option two provide the independence that our general counsel and that Sonia so eloquently explained to us that we need. We need, you know, with, with no insult meant to Marguerite's firm, because they're due to find a job, but we need special counsel that is not Marguerite's firm. That's my understanding, independent special counsel.
Thank you. I'm very uncomfortable having this discussion without a motion on the floor at this point. David, could you, again, confirm, how many nay votes in the first vote?
So the first vote was for option number two. There were seven aye votes, five nay votes. The second vote was for option number one. There were six aye votes and six no votes.
Okay. So, all right. At this point, unless, unless, unless I have a definitive indication from commissioners of a willingness to change a vote, and I would ask that commissioner to make a motion, I'm going to end this agenda item and add it to a special meeting next week. to make a motion, I'm going to end this agenda item and add it to a special meeting next week. I'll take Commissioner Serbin.
You should emphasize the fact that we are really up against a very difficult time.
The problem here is, the problem here is, before I introduce that, if we do not vote tonight, we're going to have a problem meeting some of the timeline requirements for the various options. And it may require a redesign of the options, and we may even lose one or two of the options because of the timeline requirements that are needed for it. Now, I'll ask staff and council if they have any immediate comments on viability of the options, strictly just on the viability. Hold on, please. Let me ask staff and council first, because we're really under time pressure here. If we were to have a special meeting, we certainly could not have it tomorrow. We theoretically could have it as soon as Monday. Would that still be possible for all three options?
So I'm going to defer to council on option one, since they would be responsible for the procurement process to confirm that. It would not work for option two, and it would work for option three.
Okay. Marguerite, I'm sorry to be asking.
Now, what was your proposal for this special meeting? I'm looking at the actual calendar, Chair.
We theoretically could have a special meeting on Monday, although I think that would be an extreme challenge for staff to support. But if that's what the commission would want to do, that's what we can do. But I want to see first, maybe put another way, what is the latest date where all three options as is could still be considered and if approved, voted, or implemented?
Today, to keep all three on the table.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on option three.
Thank, what if we, what if we? Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Chen to vote on option three. Do I have a second from Commissioner Pons? Okay, discussion?
So I would like to discuss, I think what we should do is vote on this one. If it gets less than seven aye votes, then we should, somebody should agree to change their vote, go back to vote on option two, because that had the most votes at that point, and approve it. Or if three gets the most votes, then we approve. That's what I would hope we could do.
Okay. We have very limited time for this. On discussion, I think it's all been brought out, except I'm going to take the opportunity to weigh in. I think option three would be a mistake, simply because we really would not need special counsel under those circumstances. With that, not seeing any further comment. David, the motion is to approve the procurement proposal, also known as the RFQ, and to approve option three. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Katerina?
Nay.
Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Larson?
Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Serbin?
Nay.
Commissioner Krugliak, Commissioner Hanson?
Nay.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Nay.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Is that a nay?
Correct. Nay, no.
Commissioner Diaz?
Nay.
Chair Bame?
Nay.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
With Commissioner Pons, Russ, and Larson voting aye, all other commissioners who are present voting no, the motion fails to achieve the required number of affirmative votes.
Commissioner Chen?
I make a, I make a motion we consider option two.
Motion from Commissioner Chen, seconded by Commissioner Serbin, to consider option two. Let me, let me offer what I think I understood from Commissioner Chen earlier, but as the motioner, I want to indulge him a little bit. This is with the idea that a commissioner may change their vote, and we might get to the nine votes?
Correct. So I think the point now is to get to nine votes. We voted on all three options. None of them were unanimous. Option two had the most aye votes, so I would hope for expediency's sake to get this done, that a commissioner or two would agree to change their vote to aye, so that we can get this done and completed tonight.
Chair Bame, council is trying to weigh in. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure, following Robert's Rules of Orders here with regards to motions.
Right. That's what I wanted to point out. The first thing you have to do, and Hillary can back me up, it really ought to be Hillary, is you've got to vote to reconsider, yea or nay, and then you bring the motion back. But the motion to reconsider has got to be made by somebody who voted against the motion.
And while I was about to explore a slightly different way of doing that, the point is well taken. Therefore, I will ask if there is a motion to reconsider option two from one of the commissioners who voted nay in the earlier vote on option two. Not seeing any.
About a reconsideration of option one.
I will ask the same question about option one, noting that it would take, David, am I correct? It would take three votes to switch?
Yes.
Okay. So I need at least?
I move to consider option one.
Okay, so, and Commissioner Russ, you voted nay on option one originally?
I did, that's right.
So we have motion reconsider from Commissioner Russ. I will take a second from another commissioner who voted no, since we need three. Commissioner Brown, did you want to say something?
I was just going to ask, when do we actually need that outside council? When do they have to hire on to us? Do we have more time than we think? Or is it less time than we think?
It somewhat depends on which option is adopted, but we will not have all three options available if we don't make a decision tonight.
Like, do we have enough time to have the ad hoc actually get together and put out a proposal and so forth?
If it was, if it, they don't have to put together a proposal because we're, and I'm asking, I'm answering this just for information's sake. The RFQ that's in the package, and it's been part of each motion, will constitute, as I understand it, sufficient RFQ, RFP-related steps that we could implement it, and it would really fall to the ad hoc just to pursue the interview process.
That's correct, Chair.
Okay, staff confirms that.
But when, when does that council actually have to come on board with us? At what point are they going to begin representing us for lawsuits and so forth?
Well, we're expecting them to have the analysis done by October four, by the October 14th meeting, which means it has to be provided for the agenda before that.
Right. We want them on board by the time, almost simultaneously when we get the racially polarized voting study. And that work's supposed to be done on the 30th, and I think it's coming to you, Commissioner Inman, contract me on this on the 7th, on the timeline. And so it's, it's really less than a month right now.
Yeah. It's less than a month. Commissioner Hanson, do you want to say something?
I just don't think you can have a discussion when you've asked for a sec.
No, and that's, it's part of the problem. The problem with option one, I just want to reemphasize, because of the tactic we're following, is that we need three votes to change. So I'm really not going to entertain it without at least a motioner, which we now have, and a second from one of the previous nay votes, because even that's not enough by itself. Do I have a second?
I will second the motion, David.
Okay, from Commissioner Katerina. Good. Discussion. All right. So the motion on the floor?
David, I'm, I'm wondering if it would be useful, as briefly as possible, to understand what the resistance is to option one.
Because if, if the commission is saying that there are people on this commission willing to serve to provide an additional layer of oversight, what's the harm in that?
I don't know that that's oversight premises, conducting.
We're working with, work with Marguerite to, to present to the full commission the, a proposed candidate. Isn't that, why is that not a better process than having just Marguerite do that?
Again, there will be two candidates under option presented to the commission.
I, I think it's a cumbersome process that, I mean, we have, this is the reason we have general counsel and we have staff, is for them to do this kind of, just to perform these functions on our behalf. And then they bring back recommendations to us, and we make the decisions. That's kind of the way it's supposed to work.
Well, I think if you have a number of commissioners who are saying, hey, we're willing to do some extra work to make, make sure this thing produces the best outcome, I don't see why you would say no to that.
People have said, people have said no. But do we have a second to my motion? I, I don't, I don't know if we did.
We did, from Commissioner, from co-vice chair Katerina.
All right. Then I, then I call for the questions, sir.
Okay. So we'll move to a vote, again, to approve the procurement proposal, also known as the RFQ, and in reconsidering to approve option one. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Larson? Commissioner Larson?
Nay.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Nay.
Commissioner Krugliak, Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Nay.
Commissioner Hanson?
Nay.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yes.
Thank you. With Commissioner Inman, Garcia, Russ, Diaz, Katerina, Chair Bame, and Commissioner Pons voting aye, all other commissioners who are present voting no, the motion fails to achieve the required number of affirmative votes. Seven votes in favor.
Okay. Commissioners, I don't know that we can make more progress tonight on this, and we obviously are going to need to have a talk about what's still viable. I regret the lack of decision on this, because I think by not making a decision, we've made a decision, which is regrettable.
I will change my, I will vote for option two. I will vote for option two, if somebody wants, and I don't know if there's one more person.
I'll do it too. I'm not in, I don't think it's a good way.
We need to have a decision tonight. I will, I will change my vote.
Yeah, I will too.
Hold on, hold on one second. I'm...
Is that a motion to reconsider, Chair?
Hold on. Counsel? Marguerite?
Yeah, Chair, yes.
At this point, I would, under any rules I've ever used, I would ask for a straw vote before entertaining a motion. Is that a problem?
No.
Okay. I would like to show of hands for option two. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight, if I'm counting correctly.
Okay.
Nine with me. All right. So with, Marguerite, with a motion to reconsider offered by one commissioner voted nay on option two, unless there's a legal reason not to proceed, I'm going to take the motion from Commissioner, co-vice chair Garcia, ask for a second.
Co-vice chair Garcia, I think, voted, oh no, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. David, would you please call the roll for a vote to approve the procurement proposal, also known as the RFQ, and to adopt option two?
I'm sorry, I'll check with council. I believe this is a vote to reconsider.
It is.
Consider with regard to option two. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
No choice.
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Nay.
Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Inman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krugliak, Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Bame, that motion passes with Commissioner Pons voting no, all other commissioners who are present voting aye.
Let me check with the clerk and council. Under various interpretations, Robert's rules, we would need another vote now, now that's being reconsidered. Is that good? We will proceed accordingly?
That's right.
Therefore?
Correct.
I'd like to move to approve option two and approval of the RFQ.
Thank you. Second?
Chen.
Chen, Commissioner Chen, thank you. Sorry about that. Discussion. Very good. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Is that a yea?
It is, yes.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak, Commissioner Garcia?
Aye, because it's the right thing for the commission and for the public, not because I think it's the right choice.
Yeah.
With Commissioner Pons voting no, all other commissioners who are present voting aye, that motion passes.
Very good. I will ask staff and council to be in touch with the members of the ad hoc committee that have been identified, Commissioners Hanson, Serbin, and Larson. Other, please feel free to be in touch with staffing council directly as needed. That concludes our business before the independent redistricting commission tonight. Staff will be in touch on whether a special meeting will be needed next week. Our next pre-mapping public hearing is Saturday, September 18th at 1:00 PM in Carlsbad, and virtually at the Green Dragon, Traverse Museum, sorry. The next regular meeting, the RC, will be Thursday, September 23rd at 4:00 PM at the Vista Civic Center, which will also include a pre-mapping public hearing at 5:30. Details again on these and other meetings are available on our website. Thanks again for attending and participating in today's meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 8:32 PM. Thank you.